Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 17th Foxborough Board of Selectmen meeting. Let's see, Christina, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Do we have anyone here for citizens input this evening? Anyone for citizens input? No? All right, do we have Mr. Welch here? Are you Mr. Welch? Okay, all right. Well, we're here to meet you. So if you want to come on up to the table and the microphone, please.
Front and center.
Yes.
All right, so thank you for coming in tonight. If you don't mind just telling us a little bit about yourself and when you started or start and whatever else you think is important to know.
I actually did start. I've been here a little over a week, working with the existing assessor, looking at all the different systems and getting up to speed on things. My background is in assessing for quite a while now. Came from the town of Swansea, which was, at the time, did not have a full-time assessor. They had a part-time assessor. So I had to put a lot of the systems in place when I got there and bring things up to speed, which I did do. Was there for four years, set the tax rate on time, you know, for the four years that I was there and developed a lot of the inspection program, which was missing when I got there. Had a lot of improvements there. Prior to that, I was in Hopkinton as a deputy assessor there. While I was there, I was able to get my Massachusetts accredited assessor certification. And then prior to that, I was actually more local. I was in Rantham, doing a lot of data collection and helping the office out, a lot of tasks there. So kind of come full circle and back to the area. Foxborough is a great town. I've always liked it and I thought it was a good opportunity. So here I am.
Great, and how nice that you had a little bit of overlap then with Hannah to kind of, you know, hand things off and do that trade.
Yes, absolutely. I do know the existing software, so that did help in the transition so far. But yeah, no, definitely, she's very helpful, you know. Foxborough is a very different community from Swansea as far as the uses, you know. You get a lot more commercial and it just a lot of variety on the residential side, whereas Swansea has more residential, actually, more parcels and a little less on the commercial side.
Great.
So every town's a little bit different, you know.
Yeah, great. Well, it's nice to put a face to a name, see when you're sitting here, we'd heard great things about you, but nice to meet you, so.
Yeah, nice to meet you too. Look forward to work with you.
How long are you going to be able to overlap with Hannah?
Last week and this week.
Okay, good.
Going well. Things are moving, you know, moving ahead nicely for heading towards the tax rate, you know, getting everything ready.
Sorry if I missed it. You go by Tom?
Yes.
Anything else? No? All right.
Welcome.
Short and sweet, welcome.
Have a good night.
Good to see you, Tom. Thanks.
All right. The next item, we're a little bit ahead of agenda, but Marissa, are you here for the Rodman Ride for Kids?
You hear me okay?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, wonderful. And is anyone coming? Are you, are we all set to begin?
No, we're all set.
Okay, wonderful. So we have your application here and we have your insurance paperwork. So if you don't mind just walking us through the event and if you can just include the details on the one-day beer and wine license as well while you do the overview of the event.
Okay, so obviously, the ride has been around since 91. This year, it's going to be on the 25th. We're crossing our fingers. We're actually really nervous, just with the Delta variant. Normally, we have about 1,200 participants riding. This year, we're scaling it back to 500. So that means just the whole barbecue setup is going to be scaled, scaled back. So there used to be a 25, 50, and 100. This year, there will only be a 25 and a 50-mile ride. So the 50-mile ride will be going off at 9:00 in waves and then the 25 will be going off in waves, starting at 10:00. So we expect people to start arriving around 7:00. Usually, the last rider coming in around 2:00 with the barbecue wrapping up probably by 3:00. We'll be picking up the beer. All will be in cans. We expect to pick that up on Friday, the 24th, September 24th. So we will have possession of it on the 24th, but won't be serving it until the day of the event, the 25th. All the volunteers will be wearing masks and gloves and the beer cans will be doing like a half-cup pour. So they will be giving them out to people at the barbecue in cups, but we'll have all cans. In the past, I believe they've had kegs, but it will only be beer cans this year. We have a refrigerated truck that will be stored in on Friday and then the day of the event, we'll be transporting it as they serve it into ice coolers.
Okay, so it will not be on property at 10 Lincoln on Friday? It will be transported over on Saturday morning?
Actually, no, it will be. It will be. We'll have it on Friday. It's going to be picked up and will be in a refrigerated truck that we'll have for the day on Friday. And then the day of the event, it'll be in the coolers.
Okay.
So actually, yeah, 10 Lincoln Road is the building behind where the event is going to be. So actually, that doesn't matter, though. It will be at where the event's going to be. That's where the refrigerated truck will be, which is the Rodman Commercial Truck Center.
Any concerns with that, where it's a one-day? Technically, I think they would need, if they're going to store it there.
I think I wrote on the application that we were, yeah, it's called a one-day, but I think I put on the application that we were going to have it on the 24th.
Katie's online and available today.
Yeah, and just so you know, it does say that you need it for each day, that it's on property. So Katie, any question? Because I know, like with Shovel Town, this has come up and they have to bring it in and out that day.
That's right.
I don't know, Katie. Did I apply for both? I remember reading that too, that I needed it for both days.
Yeah, it says you must have a permit for each day you are in possession of the alcohol.
Katie, see that?
Katie, we can't hear you very well.
Hello?
Yeah, there you go. There you go. We hear you now.
Can you get on camera, Katie? It's always a little awkward when there's just a voice coming in.
Oh, I think we lost her.
Oh, did we lose her? Yeah, so my understanding is that they would have to have two one-day licenses based on how the application is written.
That's correct. If it's two days, it has to be two licenses, two one-day licenses.
Hi, everybody. I'm really sorry. I lost you guys. It's Katie Lang.
Are you on camera, Katie?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I did. I see that I wrote a check for 100, so, and each license is 50.
Yep.
Yep, so Marissa's correct. So I have it for two days, for Friday and for Saturday, for $50 each.
Okay.
And obviously, the truck will be locked on the day that.
Yes, and we have security, we have security that will be there all night.
And everyone certified, tip certified, that's serving the alcohol is another? Tip certified?
Honestly, I don't know the answer to that question.
Who's going to be serving?
Who's going to be serving the alcohol?
They're volunteers. Shoot, I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer.
Katie, here we have.
How much does it cost? How much is the beer? Like, how much are they charging?
It's donated.
So it's, okay, so it's free beer.
But from a licensed warehouse. So it's Narragansett, Sam Adams, and an Owl, right, Marissa? An Owl's Brew, correct. So it's donated and we don't, we're not charging people for it.
So I guess the question is, you know, with the tip certification, is the volunteers, are you checking IDs? Are there wrist bracelets that confirm that the person's over 21? The tip certification is a certification to teach servers, you know, the correct way to check IDs and things like that. How are you certifying that whoever's getting the beer is over 21?
I honestly don't know how they've done it in the past. I don't know. I'd have to find out and now I might have to come back for another meeting.
Oh, that's all right. I mean, I think we need to know, like, I think all these applications, we need that, we need to, you know, clarify that. And then how about police? Any concerns with the race course? I didn't see anything in here for either piece. Did we check with them?
Yep, so police and fire and health and DBW all signed up on the public events application that's attached on board docs.
I don't see it. Am I missing it?
It's all in one complete application with the full route, the sign-offs, the beer and wine application and the public events application.
Oh, right, because they just, they just sign it. They don't, we don't have like a letter from them saying, yeah, yeah.
Separate pages.
Right, right. I was looking for separate pages, Katie. Thank you.
Right. Yeah, no problem. And they just write any of their comments or concerns, which no department had any.
Yeah, so we know it's an amazing event and we're going to approve you. We just have to go through the right steps to make sure, you know, from our standpoint, that you've got all your ducks in a row, particularly around the serving of alcohol. Katie, do you think you could send some information out to Marissa? And then, you know, Marissa, you can follow up on that and there's no problem having you come back in remote quick on August 31st. You'll have plenty of time. And again, I don't foresee any issues that would stop you from moving forward with your event at all, just getting, you know, our eyes dotted and our Ts crossed.
Of course. Marissa, I'll take a look in the files that we have there if you want to check back with your team and then we can just connect tomorrow morning.
Just to see how it was in the past. Yeah, because the tip certification isn't a requirement.
No.
It's best practice.
Yeah.
Right.
So if they have a plan, like, I would be okay if they have a plan.
Right, but we don't have a plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You know, like, I don't think it's, you're not going to have to run out and get people tip certified. A lot of times, that's for insurance as well. So whoever has insured them, if they know that there is alcohol being served, I know at a restaurant, you get a discount on your insurance if your employees are tip certified.
And I'm, you know how I'm all about consistency across applying the rules. I remember, and Doc, help me out here, but I feel like with the Orpheum, when they weren't charging for alcohol and were giving it away, we still required or asked about the tip certification and the plan. So I, you know, just for consistency, Marissa, where we, how we've handled those in the past, you know, if you can come back to us with a plan so that we understand, you know, how you make sure only those that are allowed to be served beer responsibly are served.
Sure, happy to do that.
And I'm sure.
Would it be possible if we just, we could maybe, if the board was going to be just approving the public events application and then for the August 31st meeting, just have the Marissa come back once we do our homework for the one-day beer and wine licenses?
That's a great suggestion, Katie.
Just so she can properly mark at the event and it's not a question mark, but whatever the board feels, just a suggestion.
I think that's a good idea, yeah. And again, there's no indication, Marissa, that there'll be any issue or any reason to, you know, pump the brakes, but we just got to get the packet in order and make sure we feel comfortable there.
Yeah, had it have been a plan in the past.
Yeah.
You just don't.
He's already signed off on it too. Yeah. All right, well, I'll see him in here, so. The police chief is just outside the door, but it sounds like we don't have to have tip certified, but I think that we have. Did your ears just ring? Oh, he said, there he is, outside the door.
I could hear you calling, so I was needed.
We're just going over the Rodman Ride for Kids and they just didn't have a plan for how they're going to serve the alcohol, you know, make sure, like, checking IDs or wristbands or whatever it is. So we're going to approve the events application and then just hold the beer and wine application for the next meeting.
So I would just briefly say honestly, the Rodman Ride for Kids is one of the best charities this town has. They are top, top-notch. So whatever issues, I can work with them and give the board the confidence that there's no issues.
Okay.
How's that?
I mean, I'm even okay approving it pending they supply a plan that's to everyone's satisfaction as well, if, whatever, I don't know what you guys think.
Well, I'd be more okay with what Steph said, you know, let's approve the event, but let's wait for the plan.
All right, yeah, so I think it'll just be a clerical thing. We'll approve your event tonight and then if you don't mind just coming back on Zoom on August 31st, we can just quickly run through the questions we had just on the beer and wine and you could present your plan. I'm sure that there's one that exists from the past that you can just, you know, leverage.
Yeah, yeah, there is. And I don't mind doing that at all. I appreciate that.
Okay. And again, I don't anticipate any issues, so don't take this as a hurdle.
No, I'm happy to come back. Thank you.
All right, great. So I think we're ready for a motion and it's, there's the, the event application is actually the one that's in there.
Motion to approve the public event application for the Rodman for Kids event on September 25th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, great. So we'll see you again in two weeks.
Okay, thank you all.
All right, thanks a lot. All right, next up, we have another one-day all-alcohol application. Do we have? I think I saw Frank. Frank, are you there?
I'm on video. This is Jim.
Oh, it's Jim. Oh, hey, Jim.
How are you?
Good, how are you? So I think you, I think you know the drill by now. If you want to give us a quick rundown of your application and then if you can specifically call out the Mat Light event, because that's the new piece on this one. So just to remind everyone watching at home, this is a series of 31-day licenses that Shovel Town has applied for, for Taste of Foxborough over on Chestnut Street.
Once again, it's great to see everyone. Sorry about the Zoom. I'd like to better impression, but today I've been running around. But yeah, we're here for 30 more days. Taste of Foxborough have been really successful and the weather's hurt us a little bit, but I think the people of Foxborough have enjoyed it and we've put together some good nights. So we're here to apply for 30 more licenses and you referenced Leah, the Mat Light event. Susie and Matt reached out along with Megan, the executive director, to do on the 3rd, which is a Sunday. We normally close at 6:00. We're looking to get an extension for that day to 11:00. They have a Patriot watch party in conjunction with the Mat Light Foundation. It's a fundraiser for the Mat Light Foundation. They'll be using Taste of Foxborough.
All right, great. And just tell us about the new person on here. So, you know, every time we have a new application, we have a new manager of record. Can you just tell us about Connell Kelly?
Connell's our executive chef. He's actually been with us for two years. Johnson and Will's trained, but he's in charge of the food program. So once again, he is kind of the general manager of both locations, but he's on the Foxborough location, I'd say 95% of the time.
Okay, great. All right, so the big difference here is that that Sunday night late game, they're looking to stay open a little bit later than we had discussed. I know I have personally been there and, you know, it seems pretty contained. I personally have not heard any negative feedback. I don't know if anyone on the board has. I don't have any concerns with that. I did ask, I assume you'll have TVs. No one's going to go there for a Patriot watch party and not watch the game and I don't remember seeing TVs now, but you do have an entertainment license, so I assume you guys are bringing something and that's all covered as well.
We've actually wired two TVs on, behind the stage.
Okay, and they already have the license for that, so that's all set for the board. So we will expect to see you one more time for the last six licenses, is what I understand, after this, and we'll see you again on September 28th. We'll be, we'll be the last one.
Okay, Mike McHale.
Okay.
Question though, should we split that up with two motions? The October 3rd one sort of being a separate motion? Or do you want to do it all together? The only reason is because it's, they're going later.
Yeah, we have a motion with it all together, which I'm okay with it all read as one motion and that top one that's in there, it does call out that date and that particular time. So I'm okay with wrapping it all together under one vote and one motion if everyone else is.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and then, you know, I did, I did talk to Bill. We're charging $500 for each of these 31-day ones, how the last one will be held, will be handled. Jim, and those will be at $50 for the last six licenses, is from what I understand, just making sure we're all on the same page and understand.
Okay. Yeah, the check was sent over to Town Hall. I think Kathleen should have it.
Okay, all right, great. Ready for motion, the first one.
Motion to approve 31-day beer and wine licenses for September 4th through 6th, 9th through 12th, 16th through 19th, 23rd through 26th, and 30th. October 1st, those were all in September. October 1st through 3rd, October 7th through 11th, October 14th through 17th, October 21st and October 22nd, along with a request to open from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Sunday, October 3rd, for a Mat Light Foundation event for Shovel Town Brewery Incorporated, doing business as Taste of Foxborough.
Second.
All right, great. Any discussion? I know we have a lot of people here in the audience. Is anyone here about this one? No? Okay. All right, great. All those in favor? All right. I think we're all good. Jim, we'll see you again one more time.
All right, Leah, thank you. Thank you, board. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. All right. The next item on the amended agenda is a block party application, but we're actually going to save that for a motion that is at the end of the meeting. So I am going to skip that one. I see some folks from the Patriots in the audience. Do you have everyone here? Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Do you mind getting started a little early? Get you home a little earlier? All right. So the next item is the Patriot Place Outdoor Open Container proposal. So this is a little bit different than something we've seen up there, so I think Brian and the team are going to walk us through the concept. Although, from what I understand, just for the board, I do not believe that we need to take a vote on this under, you know, temporary outdoor dining, just like, I'm going to use a random example, like the 99 is serving in the parking lot on private property. This would be Patriot Place, you know, serving outside of their normal ABCC limits and boundaries on that private property. Does Cable Access have the map too? Do we know? Yes? Okay, all right, great. All right, so if you gentlemen don't mind just introducing yourselves and then running us through what you get going on.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for meeting with us tonight. My name is Stephen Miller with McDermott Quotient Miller in Boston. You know Brian Early, who's the CEO of Patriot Place. Also with us is Brian Deck and Brian, Joe Parr, I'm sorry. And there, Brian's the CEO, as you know, of Patriot Place and the other two gentlemen are security people at management for Patriot Place. So we wanted to come and talk to you about having the opportunity, Brian could go through the plan, but the owners of the Patriot Place came up with this idea to add two outdoor areas to allow, to assist the restaurants to provide some additional space so people can go purchase food and alcoholic beverages and have a place outside of the licensed premises for those restaurants to consume the product, give them some additional spaces plus further amenity to the people that do go to Patriot Place and shop and go to the different premises. So I turn it over to Brian to kind of walk you through what we're proposing and I know you'll have questions and we have done, as I know the town has, I know the town has spoken to the ABCC about this, as we have before we even, before we even decided to move forward, we worked with the ABCC to make sure that we were in compliance with everything that they saw as part of this program. So turn it over to Brian.
Great, thank you, Steve. Again, I'm Brian Early, the Vice President General Manager of Patriot Place and with me are my colleagues, Joe Parr, who's the Director of Security and Risk Management for the entire property, as well as Brian Deck, who's Director of Site, Security and Incident Management, two of our senior folks within the security team, which is an important part of the concept that we're going to be talking about tonight. As Steve mentioned, the concept of extending the beverage service beyond the existing premises of our restaurants is something that I've been looking at for a number of years and it was just not something that was really possible in legislation that existed prior to COVID. And of course, we all know that some modifications were made to liquor service during COVID. In fact, the takeout regulations were provided for restaurants as a means of support during COVID and those have been extended through the end of May of 2022. And what that provides restaurants, the ability to do is to not only sell food, as they've traditionally been able to do for takeout, but to also include alcoholic beverages in sealed containers to be, to be purchased and consumed off-premise. What we're going to talk about today is called, in the industry across the country, are called DORA's, D-O-R-A. It's an acronym for a Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. There are 24 permanent DORA districts in the United States that were in place before COVID. A couple have come in during COVID, specifically the city of Cincinnati, and then a number have popped up during COVID as a means by which cities and metropolitan areas have looked to help their restaurants recover from the pandemic. Patriot Place restaurants, much like every other restaurant in city and town, were certainly devastated by the shutdowns that the pandemic created. Currently, we are getting back, the sales and revenue and traffic numbers are coming back. We are comparing them always now to 2019, because 2020 is not a comparison. We're still off somewhere between 20 and 35%, depending on the restaurant at Patriot Place on a monthly basis from a sales standpoint. And those other tenants that are supported by our restaurant traffic are still off anywhere from 35, up quite a bit higher when you look at the movie theater, which is down anywhere from around 74% still. Not their fault, it's an industry thing as a result of COVID, but we're doing everything possible to bring traffic back to the center and we think extending the opportunity within these DORA zones that I will talk about in a second will give our restaurants another revenue opportunity that doesn't currently exist for them as they look to recover. Other areas in the country that you may be familiar with that have these DORA zones are Navy Pier in Chicago, downtown in Tampa, Florida, Nashville, Tennessee, Savannah, Georgia. As I mentioned, Cincinnati has designated seven DORA neighborhoods and I mentioned the pop-ups. Close to home, the town of Needham, Mass. passed the legislation in 2020 to extend, and it extended it in 2021, that made it legal for patrons to consume takeout alcoholic beverages in a number of town-owned public properties, including the town common. And the town's select board is considering making the public consumption of alcohol on town property a permanent policy in the town of Needham. We are looking at a plan and want to share with you a plan and get your support on that plan of allowing to go take out alcoholic beverage in two designated areas in the North Marketplace around at Patriot Place. As you can see on this map, to Joe's right, DORA Zone 1 will go from the Bar Louie or Stage area, that if you're familiar with our Stage Gathering area that's now at Patriot Place, all the way down to the top of the grand stairs, heading down to the stadium. DORA Zone 2 would be the Plaza area in front of the Renaissance Hilton Garden Inn Hotels around near Saga Restaurant and just south of Six String Restaurant. We think that Patriot Place is uniquely positioned to provide this amenity to our guests as we have onsite 24-hour security personnel, along with state-of-the-art security video monitoring systems throughout the property. We will have Patriot Place security monitoring the DORA locations at all times during operations. We will provide staff, additional staffing to these areas with extra patrols during the periods of 5:30 PM to 9:30 PM, Monday through Friday, and from 1:30 PM to 9:30 PM, Saturday and Sunday. The hours of operations for the DORA areas will be noon to 9:30 PM daily. We have standard mobile foot patrols throughout the North Marketplace at all operating times of the center, including those hours where we do not have extra patrols on hand. Consumption of alcohol not purchased from the Patriot Place licensee will not be permitted at any time and consumption of alcohol beverages in any other areas of Patriot Place property will continue to be prohibited. I provided in the packet, I can go through the details, maybe that's not necessary, of the protocols for the licensee serving under the current takeout, takeout regulations that the state of Massachusetts. of the protocols for the licensee serving under the current takeout regulations that the state of Massachusetts allows. Most importantly, a takeout alcohol beverage must be accompanied by a food item. So we're looking at this to be a full restaurant experience, not just purchasing of alcohol. As I mentioned, we'll have team-up security personnel monitoring the areas, the DORA areas, at all times of operation, whether on video, our typical foot patrol officers at 24 hours a day, but also additional staffing during what we believe will be a little bit more heavier periods, and that will be the 5:30 to 9:30 p.m. on weekdays, and 1:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. during weekends. Foot patrol officers will be monitored to ensure guests do not leave the designated areas with open containers and for any issues with guest behavior, including underage consumption. Standard protocols for dealing with guest behavior that we have in place at all times at Patriot Place will be enforced. All Patriot Place security personnel will be and have been teams-trained on safe alcohol service. And we will certainly be working in conjunction with Chief Grace and the Foxborough Police in current police details or additional details as the chief sees fit, if necessary, as we see unfolding this concept. We have a signage plan, which I've provided some examples of, where we will use as further messaging to our guests that certainly what is expected of them than when they're in the DORA zone, where they can not take beverages beyond. We have five points of egress in the Zone 1, and we have three points of egress in Zone 2. And then we'll also have signage throughout the other areas indicating to guests where they can consume and what areas they cannot, which would be the areas, if you would, between, obviously between Zone 1 and Zone 2 in the North Marketplace. So I think the key thing is here that it's a unique opportunity that we have. We have a window between now and May that we would like to do this. We have, you know, security that, you know, handles much larger operations with alcohol consumption outside on our property, obviously during full stadium events. We have the video camera capabilities of being able to identify where all alcohol is purchased and then eventually consumed in the doors, and where people are coming from, so that we can monitor from a liability standpoint as well. When we have, if there's a situation that arises and the chief has to come back to us, we'll be able to monitor where an individual purchased and be able to do that reconnaissance, which is not always the case, you know, typically with off-site situations that occur. But we have the ability and technology to do that. So with that, I would entertain any questions, comments that you may have about the plan. We're, again, looking for your support. Those of you who know me well know that we would never do something like this without the support of this board, public safety officials as well. This is a pretty important thing. It will be a model for the state of Massachusetts. So we're looking to consider this a very high-profile opportunity for Foxborough.
I have two questions. First one's an easy one. I've never noticed, but do your security have uniforms? So when you're going to be patrolling this, will people know that?
Yes.
Okay. I've just never noticed, which is good, right?
They're identified in a orange polo shirt.
Okay. All right. But two, what about during games or events?
We would, right now, the zones will be open daily from 12:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Like we do for anything at Patriot Place and Gillette Stadium, we're going to monitor and probably make decisions as we see fit, depending on the situation. Right now, I'm not looking to challenge that, because if you think about it, and someone brought this up today in a meeting we had, the restaurants are pretty full on an event day. And this gives us an opportunity for additional revenue to happen in places, maybe a family wants to take, go to not be in the crowd. Obviously, we're still dealing with COVID situations, and the crowding aspect may be something where people would want to stay outside and enjoy pizza from Tavolino or Citizen Crust with a beverage. And I think that, you know, we would like to offer that as stadium events unfold and continue to come back. Thinking back on this past Friday, it would have been a beautiful Friday night for being able to do that, the way the crowd flowed for the preseason game. But between Brian and Joe and myself, we will constantly look at situations and determine from a safety profile if it makes sense to continue this.
And just as an offshoot, if I can. So you don't think that added traffic of a game day that's not preseason with 65,000 or 68,000 people, or a stadium event, concert, Chesney comes back and there's, you know, 72,000 people, that extra traffic through there wouldn't make it more difficult to monitor, or is that part of what you're saying you have to see?
Well, you know, with the increased number of security personnel on hand, who are going to be briefed in that this program is allowed first time, we're going to see how it flows. You know, you bring up a, you know, a concert that might be the profile that my friends to the left and right of me say, "Brian, this is not the event we want to do this in," and we fully support that.
Thank you, Leah.
I have a couple of questions. Brian, will it be, will you have like tables set up in here? Or is it, like in these zones, are people, is it more like a stand-up area? Like, you know, even in the stadium, there's some areas, people just stand, have a drink, or?
So right now, in Zone 1, we have a number of tables already set up outside in the stage perimeter of the stage area, as well as a number of Adirondack chairs. We will be adding to that area, as well as you head down towards the grand stairs for other kind of place-making and seating areas for folks. To be honest with you, as anybody who's tried to order furniture, outdoor furniture, there's quite a big time.
Wallpole woodworkers didn't help, having them right there now?
That's a great idea. Yes, they will, they have already been leaned on a bit to help us with the supply chain. But, so we have existing places for folks to sit right now. We'll be adding to that. And then we will also be doing in Zone 2, down by the hotels as well. So, you know, obviously, as the hotel business picks up, it'd be a nice opportunity. We could have entertainment down in that area as well.
And the other question was, so I know how extensive the cameras are you have there, and I have no doubt you guys would be able to follow if there was an issue, a fight broke up, you know, where they bought their alcohol. Is there anything, like when you're going into the stadium, where you're asked to either, you only have a certain size bag you can bring in, or if you have something, you have to open it? What I'm getting at, is there anything so that somebody doesn't bring alcohol into these spots with them? I, rest assured that you're not going to let anybody get out with it. So I work in a restaurant, our owner decided not to do any alcohol to take out. You know, his decision. But the alcohol that will come out, would it be like, say if it's a beer, like in the stadium, they take the top off? Will there be any of that, or you want it closed so they can walk from this DORA possibly to the other door? Like, so, oh, wait a minute. No alcohol. Oh, so whatever door you're in, that's where you're going to be? I'm answering my own question.
Maybe I should step back to the regulation. Any takeout alcohol today has to be in a sealed container. So let's put in the idea that Tavolino Restaurant is not in either DORA zone. If someone were to do takeout with a pizza and a couple of beers from Tavolino, the beers would have to be sealed, or the bottle of wine would have to be sealed. And then consumption could happen inside the DORA zone. Then they would be opened, obviously, and consumed. Nothing can leave that DORA zone after it's been opened. You cannot move from zone to zone.
So close, because right now, the restaurants can do that, whether they're going to utilize the DORA zone or not. They can take it and leave with them.
Right, but until we activate this concept, we have not allowed consumption in the common areas. This would be, that would be the slight or significant, depending how you look at it, change to the policy we have currently. As far as any bringing alcohol from outside, as I mentioned in my remarks, we are not allowing any alcohol. For 14 years of Patriot Place, we've never allowed alcohol from outside to be brought in. The overarching reason we're doing this is to support restaurants as a time to recover. It would do us no good to bring alcohol in from other sources. It would not help the restaurants. In fact, it would hurt the restaurants, and we have no intention of doing that.
Well, and so why I'm asking is not that you would allow it, but how, are you going to rely on security watching? You know, if somebody comes in, all of a sudden, they take a bottle of wine. You know, maybe they want to go up and have pizza with Citizen's crust, but they didn't want to spend the money on the alcohol. I'm asking for the liability that if somebody were to bring it in with them. So is that the way you would monitor that, too, is through your security?
Yeah, I mean, security, again, will be roaming. They'll know what to look for. Again, we've been doing this for 14 years. I would be lying to if people have not tried to do it in the past. We've taken care of that, so we're pretty darn good at it. The other side of the equation is that if there was confusion, or someone said, you know, thought that someone brought something in, they would have to demonstrate a receipt for that transaction. And that would be what we'd be looking for from a security standpoint, if there was any question.
Yep, great. And just the last one isn't even a question, it's just a comment. It's nice to see that you're doing all you can to help them out. It's just, it's good for everybody. It's good for you guys, it's good for the businesses, and it trickles right down to good for the town with the meals tax and everything.
Absolutely.
So it's kind of a win-win for everybody.
You know, our goal right now is to get back to providing all of the amenities that Patriot Place provided in a very strong year of 2019. We're climbing back, doing everything we can, but this is just one more tool in the belt we hope that will get us there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, where I see Chief Grace in the audience.
And Chief Keller back there.
Let's not forget the other chief. Have you had any opportunity to speak with the chief on this project?
Yes, the chief has been involved in a number of meetings we've had on this concept from the get-go. We started talking about this probably in late spring. There was a number of legal reviews that were required, and the chief has provided the same plan. He and I have spoken. I won't speak for him, ask his comments on the plan.
Yeah, so the board, I just want to let you know that this isn't like the first time I've seen this. I've been working with Brian, his team. Bill Christensen from the, who runs security at Gillette, we have looked at it. Conceptually, the idea where we are with COVID is getting people outdoors has been fantastic, thinking outside the box as in society in general. The team that's been put together to present this to me, we've gone back and forth, there's some agreements, disagreements. But what's amazing is Brian and I, just like when COVID kind of wiped out last year, as soon as things opened up, we have an ongoing security plan for Patriot Place. We have modified it. It's up and running. And moving forward, we have a plan in regards to how the police will actually play a role in this as well. So I have their full reassurances, whatever we need, it'll be available to us. And when we talk about the dinner crowd, and we talk about the afternoon crowd, historically, based on our statistics, we don't have the calls of service associated with barrooms that really start ramping up 9:30, 10:30. This idea will be over by, I believe, 9 o'clock. So we will transition back to our current model as well. So it's really about, if you left the Patriot Place, it's families, it's different demographics. So in regards to enforceability or any discrepancies, I think they'll be minimal. But we have a plan if they're not. And it's a fluid plan. Obviously, this plan, we live in New England, is seasonal as well. So what we do in September and what we do in February are going to be very different. So we take it one week at a time. Even currently, we have a weekly review of events at Gillette. We discuss it. If we need to make modifications, we do. So just want to reassure the board that the dialogue with Brian and Gillette is ongoing, and no concerns there.
Chief Keller, too?
No, just like.
Take Mike John's seat. This one, I think, has a mic, if you don't mind.
No, just like, just as in all the alternative dining plans, you know, we review every alternative dining plan with our partners and make sure that everything's, you know, good for access, egress, fire safety, things like that. So, you know, we've worked with this team multiple times a week, so very comfortable with the plan and satisfied with all the requirements, so.
We may just have to take some temporary modifications to the rules and regulations that we currently have in just number 26 and 27, and maybe make some stipulations. Obviously, Town Council can look at it.
Is this outdoor dining regulations?
No, this is just our liquor.
Oh, this is on their application, you're saying?
No, it's on ours. It's our liquor regulations about alcohol not being allowed to leave the premises. We may have to just kind of tweak that for this, to make sure we're in compliance. And then the off-premise consumption. But besides those two, there's not really much of a change. And as Brian did say in regards to, that was my biggest question, is liquor violations and enforcement. And as we have worked at Patriot Place over the years, we've had every call imaginable. And every time we've needed information, video requests, we've been able to get them all. The bars themselves are fantastic. They actually themselves have video surveillance and have all been forthcoming with anything that we've requested, up until actual receipts of the night, in some cases. So there's never been like a wall put up that we can't capture information.
Madam Chair, just to, I'm sorry, if you want.
No, go ahead.
Madam Chair, with respect to the comment that the chief made about the suspension of or alteration of a couple of the regulations, I believe the statute allows for that, the state statute allows for that temporarily until the COVID requirements are suspended.
Right, the COVID, the COVID kind of basically trumps that. The COVID rules passed by the legislature and signed by the governor allow restaurants to have alcohol takeout. The restaurants will still be liable to follow the rules that there has to be with a food order and that they have to maintain a receipt and have to give a receipt. And obviously, they're responsible for checking IDs and all that. So, and that expires April 30th by the statute that was signed by the governor. So it goes, actually stops on May 1st.
So we wouldn't need to change those regulations until and if this became permanent?
That's correct. At that point, you'd have to make a formal change, but up until then, it's just trumped by the legislation.
I guess that was sort of my question. Well, Katie's walking out. But I'm sure you guys can answer it. So obviously, this trumps, the COVID trumps it, but you're looking to do this beyond potentially May 1st?
Yes, I mean, we would, obviously, we're going to be in review of this program as we start it, you know, immediately, to see how it goes and ensure that it provides that benefit to the restaurants we're expecting it to provide. But to do so, you're correct, that if, to extend it beyond, if the state were not to extend this program beyond May 1st, then we would probably request, as the town of Needham did, to change their legislation to allow this on their liquor regulation, so.
So we'd see that down the road as a formal?
Yeah, this is something I think will be proof in concept. And should we all agree that it's working and we want to, you know, look into that, we'll come back for that request.
Madam Chair, can I just speak to that? So is there been any kind of formal action taken at the state level to look towards creating an option for cities and towns to do this, Brian?
I think there's been, there's been pressure both ways. To be honest with you, retail liquor stores are not in favor of this. So, you know, it provides them competition against what, you know, what they do. I think it's a much different model if you, you know, you're going to pay a much higher premium for a beer, wine, or cocktail from a restaurant than you would by purchasing it retail. So there's a little bit of a clash in the distributor side in the state. But, you know, it's, I think, I think it's more about identifying districts like this and saying, "This works. It's healthy. It's doing what it needs to do. The community, you know, has shown that it works. It's safe." As opposed to legislating it, you know, in terms of a program that's related to all restaurants would take out. This is something, you know, whether we have the opportunity to get the ear of the governor to say that this is a model that is probably something you should take away from legislating across the board and say, "This is something that towns..." My research has shown that a town... My research has shown that a town in the state of Massachusetts has the ability to make this decision. What would have to change would be the legislation to allow, if it ends on May 1st, is allow for alcohol in those towns to leave the premises, which which is the conflict that would occur.
Bill, I know the Restaurant Association, Mass Restaurant Association is working very hard, along with some other restaurant associations, to make this permanent, or at least get it extended through another year, so.
Well, it strikes me, it strikes me that this is sort of like a pilot program in many ways. Because there isn't anything else really, I mean, there's, I know there's the Needham model, but this is really a significantly different approach than what's been done.
This has a scale that doesn't exist anywhere in Massachusetts.
Thanks. So I think you answered the question, this question. But if somebody gets a container of an alcoholic beverage from Scorpion Bar, they can walk down to Dora and consume it there, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not expecting that this to be sort of an extension of, say, Six String, where they can, it's like a patio, they can go in and out. It's more like as they're leaving, they can
Yeah, the key is that that once purchased for takeout, it cannot go back into the premise that it was sold at. You know, whether, you know, by right, we can, we could extend to more than the Dora zones that that we're planning now. But but we're looking to control this in areas that people really want to be. There's not a real excitement about being in front of Victoria's Secret to have a beer. But there's a stage performance down in Dora Zone 1 with seating and things. That that's where it makes sense to have it.
Yeah, to that point, I, Zone 1 is, I expect it to, it's already bustling and it's expansive. Zone 2, when I walk down that way, it's like, oh, it's all, you know, it's quiet.
Right.
It's obviously significantly smaller. Just curious about the planning around that.
Well, just for what you're saying, we have now the ability to activate that with something of substance. You know, certainly, we put in the the stage down by in Zone 1, it, you know, it changed the whole complexity of everything we do. And that's sort of the focal point. Well, my job is to create more focal points. And there's a very good chance we would do something very similar over the next couple of years in the area near the hotels.
Got it. Thank you, thank you.
Do you have like an education campaign for like the Tavallinos, the Scorpion Bars, to educate consumers that are getting takeout alcohol, how they can't open it as soon as they leave the doors for the walk?
Yes, I didn't get into that level of detail, but in the packet, there'll be stand-ups at each of the restaurants. Now, this is, if any of the restaurants are listening tonight, they are not aware that we're doing this. I did not want to, let's say, get their hopes up or expectations until I was comfortable that the town was comfortable. So we're going to have a very comprehensive program with all the restaurants to to let them know about this. We have to, some of them have to determine how they're going to handle the sealed containers if they're not already prepared to do that. It shouldn't be a big deal. But there'll be information at all all the restaurants explaining what the program is. The multiple signage throughout the center, we'll reaffirm that to our guests as well. But, you know, I think the restaurants will adopt to this very easily because, as we always say, their their livelihood is on the line if their liquor license is at risk. So if they're going to take advantage of that, of this program, then they've got to adhere to the program that has been established.
Okay, great. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just one quick thing. Anecdotally speaking, I've been down to Savannah several times, and I think it's been their regulations have been active there for several years. Anecdotally speaking, I have noticed no issues in the Savannah, the historic district, in terms of alcohol type issues. So it seems to work well down there, just.
Yeah, of the 24 districts, you know, and many of them go well beyond. As Chief mentioned, we're stopping this at 9:30 because we don't think it's necessary for the demo that we're looking to serve. Many of the districts go, you know, well into early morning hours. That's not really something that we feel makes sense for us. But all of them work well, and, you know, the the issues they have are fairly minimal.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
When do you hope to start?
That was my next one.
Doc, you'll be up there 12:01 tomorrow.
It just does. I think stopping it at 9:30 is is great. I think that's huge, knowing that two different dynamic of, you know, the younger population getting there at 10 versus the family.
Because I've told Chief Grace that I'll take the 12, the noon to 9:30 shift. He's got to deal with it.
And did you answer that one? What, any date? Tomorrow. Tomorrow, literally, oh, literally tomorrow, I think, okay.
Well, we, you know, to, as
Well, the restaurants wouldn't be ready, though, so we can't do tomorrow.
No, the restaurants will be ready. The signage will be, you know, again, if we have an affirmative support on this program, the signage is, signage will be starting to be created by our Director of Marketing tomorrow. And then I'll be meeting with the restaurants individually to let them know about this program. We have, we have the protocols in place to distribute. I would say you're not going to see it this weekend, but more than likely by next weekend.
And, you know, Tom at Tavallinos and Citizens Crust is, has Fox cares. So I think having him on property and wrapping that into, you know, the program that he that he leads will be helpful as well.
Yeah, Tom is obviously one of our go-to key manager operators with with two per, two locations on property. And he does one of the best jobs there is.
Okay, so I think I know the answer to the next one. There's no, going to be no kiosks like you see in the stadium selling like margaritas or, you know, Bud Light or anything. That's not going to happen out there. And then the other thing is, you know, staffing has been such an issue. Have you had any issues getting staff for security? Have you ever been, you know, found yourself in a jam where you're understaffed? I know I was at a restaurant in town this week, and probably only 25, 30% of the tables were full, but there's a wait because there's not enough enough staff. So do you feel like you're at a comfortable spot, security, and staff inside the restaurants to be able to handle?
Well, I'll speak for inside the restaurants. It's still a challenge. But, you know, this, the takeout business is is continuing to support. And it's actually takes pressure off the staffing because, you know, other than the kitchen having to to create the meal and the bartender creating whatever drinks to go, you don't have that server interaction that's necessary. And that's where the challenges are. I'll defer to Joe for, you know, the the issue. We're all looking at shifts of two or three additional security folks. So I'm not sure we have that much of a challenge with that level, small level of staffing increase.
Yeah, with the two to three people, we don't feel that it's going to be too much of a burden to find the staff. It also creates an opportunity for people to pick up regular hours. You know, a lot of folks are working for, looking for those types of opportunities too. So with the daily shifts of 12:30 to 9:30, we can get folks into a regular routine and working some regular shifts and helping them out with some hours. So we feel confident that we'll be able to deliver on what's needed.
All right, great. And then just, you know, just a comment from my perspective. You know, I, first game, you know, depending on how things go, I think it's a little, a little aggressive, you know, just to see how things go and give it a little time. Obviously, you guys are the experts, and I'm sure if you have a plan, you do the same thing in a much larger scale inside the stadium. So it's just taking it out. But I'd like to see we have a track record, you know, of, you know, hopefully, a weekend or two under our belts before, because I know the the home opener is around the corner.
Yeah, I think we do want to get a couple of weeks under our belt, as you as you mentioned. And, you know, to be on a practical level, it's it's not as important to us. And, you know, the restaurants can't wait to have full stadium-type event business. But I want to make sure that, you know, given what's happening with some of the COVID variant, that we have options available to even patrons coming up for games who are, may look at what you used to see in 2019 with a line, a full restaurant packed, that maybe there's just another option that's available to them.
Okay, great. So again, we don't have to take any vote. This is more informative. This is allowed, you know, by right right now with with the governor's orders. Any other questions from the board? I do have someone in the audience that has a question. If you don't mind just coming up to the the podium, because we, the people at home can't hear you if you if you're back there sometimes. If you don't mind just telling us your name and where you live.
My name is Bruce Bowden. I live at 89 Moore Street here in Foxborough. If somebody violates one of these edicts, what is the protocol? What happens to them? Are they arrested? Are they taken to court? What happens to them?
Are you asking
Are they banned from ever coming to one of these occasions again?
You're talking about a patron?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it'd be no different than if they they violated any of our protocols today. If it rose to the level of prosecution, they'd be prosecuted. If it rose to the level of being what we call a letter of disinvite, where they're they're told that they can no longer come back to Patriot Place. If they do so, they'd be arrested for trespassing. It's private property. So we have a number of steps in terms of dealing with situations, none of which would change in this in this scenario. It just, it would be something that if it were to occur in in this program, we would utilize those same steps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. So with that, I think it's an interesting concept. We use the term at work with COVID, you know, what's a boomerang? And, you know, what's what's kind of here to stay? What's what's going to bounce back and and what's going to stay? And I think, you know, temporary outdoor dining, some of these liquor laws, we may see some changes that are that are longer term as long as everything plays out and people see it's it's not necessarily as scary as everyone thought it was. So it's it's a good time to have some good things come out of such a such a bad year and a half. You know, maybe some creative new business opportunities.
Great. Well, thank you very much for the time tonight and appreciate everyone's support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get lonely up here.
All right, so while these gentlemen are disassembling over here, I'll just kind of give a brief piece about the next item on the agenda, which is the 119 Moore Street Realty Trust, the local initiative program that was in front of us last meeting and again today. This is a continuation of the discussion. It is not a public hearing. We have a number of things that the board have to review, have had to review and discuss. And then Paige is takeaway, which Paige, you're there, right? Can you hear us okay? Paige was tasked, when we left the last meeting, to go out to all the departments, all the stakeholders in town at Town Hall, and get their opinion, you know? So what does conservation think? What does police think? What does fire think? And and so on. So Paige has produced a pretty comprehensive report. It is rather lengthy, so great job, Paige. I think it's 10 or so pages that go through every department. We have some letters from citizens in here. There's an introduction. Anyone that would like to see a copy of this, this is available on the town's website. So anyone can go out and and access this. It's been up, I don't know, maybe a week or so now, and it will continue to be up. So if you go to the Foxborough homepage and then you go to the Planning Department, it's under Current Projects. Did I address that correctly?
Use the front page, right on the front page.
Right on the front page, even easier. Okay.
Yes.
So there's a shortcut right on the front page, and you can, you can read the whole, the whole report here. But I have asked Paige to, you know, give a little bit of of an overview of what she found through talking to all the departments. But just to set the stage with, you know, a little bit further with what we are doing, because this local initiative program is new, I am going to read a little bit about what the roles, what the role of the Board of Selectmen is in this. Because it is something new, it's something we haven't seen. I don't want to make sure we're all clear. And I don't think we're looking to rush anything through or, you know, make a decision tonight. We could, but I don't know that I see that happening. I imagine there'll probably be some more questions that that we'll come away with today that we'll have to do a little bit more research on. So the Board of Selectmen is being asked to sponsor and support the proposed development at 119 Moore Street. Our role here is, the Board of Selectmen, is to look at a couple of things. Does the proposed development meet the needs for the town for diversified housing stock? So is there a need here in Foxborough for the diversified housing stock and affordable housing? Is the proposed development an appropriate residential use of the site in which it's to be developed? So is is 119 Moore Street a good place for a project? Is the conceptual design, and remember, this is just conceptual at this point. It's very high level. There's a lot of things to still be figured out. Is it appropriate for the site, taking into account the site itself, the location of the site, the surrounding neighborhood and the surrounding environment? We know it's surrounded by by water and other things over there. And then lastly, does the proposed development present issues regarding public health and safety, traffic, open space concerns, environment, and its impact on the surrounding area of the site? So, you know, we're really looking at all those things. Is there a benefit to the town for the Board of Selectmen to sign on to have this go forth as a friendly 40B? Because everyone knows that we're over the 10% now. So this would be something that we would be allowing. And something that is a little bit different is this is an ownership project. So a lot of times when you hear 40B, you think of apartments. You may think of the lodge, you may think of others that are rentals, where this is an ownership project. So other comparable projects in town, and Paige, correct me if I'm wrong or stop me along the way, but like Nadia Estates. So if you came off of the highway onto Mechanic Street, right there by Oak, there's that that new, that new complex back there, that's a similar type of ownership that has some affordable units within it before we met our 40B limit in town. So just so people can kind of visualize what type of project we're talking, you know, not the lodge, more like a Nadia Estates, but obviously on a on a different scale, different location.
Yeah, how many units are in Nadia Estates?
I don't, I don't know how many are in Nadia, Paige?
36.
36 units. Okay, so from what I understand, and I want to make sure that this is very clear tonight, and I think we'll have to draft a letter. But our role here is to, is to, if we want to support the project and move forward, is not to look at how many units it is. It's not to, you know, like those specifics will be done by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So my thought is, if we move forward with this, we are not stamping. 59 units are what we want. Four, but, you know, four, four-unit apartment buildings are what we want. We are saying, you know, if this moves forward, that we think there's a need for this, but this has to be vetted and looked at by the Zoning Board of Appeals for what is the right project for the site. Did I summarize that or miss anything? Or any questions from the board, just as we set the stage and the foundation before we kind of move forward? So again, the role of our board is, is a project like this needed? And is it a positive thing for the town on the site and for for our citizens, for for everyone? Not, you know, is 60 units right? Is 20 units right? Where where does it fit in? That that will be done through the the Board of Appeals. And we will have that in writing, that we're not stamping those specifics, but the conceptual project for that to be vetted out. You know, we are, we are kind of in the clouds where they'll be in the weeds on the project with those details. Bill, any, anything?
It's accurate.
Okay. All right, so what I think I'll do next, just to let everyone kind of know where where my head's at, I think we'll have Paige present her report. We also asked the Planning Board, which, you know, they they do this more than we do as a courtesy. We had asked them to kind of take a look at it. I watched the meeting. I don't know if other people have watched the meeting, but Paige also presented a letter from from the Planning Board that's in our packet here. And then we have a number of different other letters. We have a letter from from a number of different neighbors. We have a letter from Joan Gallivan, who is is not a Moore Street neighbor. And then we also have a letter from Jay Barrows that's cosigned by Paul Feeney in in favor of the project. So we have a number of letters, you know, that are that are for the project, some that have concerns, some that have questions. But they are all here in our packet, and we have read every single letter that has been presented to us. So I see there's a number of people here. I imagine that you you probably want to let us, you know, know your thoughts about the project. Just know, this is not a public hearing, but we'll we'll certainly take input. We want to hear from people. But, you know, please, just, you know, if you've written a letter, we have your letter, we have your comments. You know, try to keep it as brief as you can. And then if if you have thoughts as a group, you know, if you can, you know, let us know what you think, but maybe we won't repeat the same, the same thought. So that is is where I'm thinking we'll go with this. And then I know I personally would like to actually see the site. I wanted to talk to the board to see if you feel like that's something that would be helpful to you or not. We do have Mr. Seg and Mr. Casper here, if you want to come up to the front and be at the table in case there's any questions. But that is something that I had raised to Paige and others, that for me, I'm a visual person and that may be helpful to me. I know I've driven by there a number of times, but to actually get on the site. So just want the board's consensus, if that's something you all would find helpful as well. And then we'll just have to pick a time and date, and we will have to post that as a meeting, so we'll have to figure out when that is with at least, you know, a couple days notice to get that posted.
Sure. Well, if you have any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer them now.
Okay.
But yeah, we certainly would welcome you to visit the site. And if you could give us some days and times, we'll try and make those work into your schedule. Be happy to do a tour with you. That would be, that would be very helpful. I'd like to see where it is. It's, it's so far down Moore Street near the Mansfield Line. Maybe some of you don't know where it is, we'd be happy to show you.
All right, great. So I think I'll turn it over to Paige. Paige, if you don't mind walking us through your report in summary, I think that will be helpful for the board, the audience and people at home to hear.
Sure, thanks Leah. So at the request of the Board of Selectmen at the last meeting, we did hold a staff review meeting. The list of attendees were Matt Brennan, the Health Agent, Rich Noonan, Deputy Police Chief, Dave Larissy, Deputy Chief of the Fire Department, Jane Pierce from the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Agent, sorry, Bob Wardley, the Water Superintendent, Lance Del Piero from the Town Engineer, Barry Ringler, Building Commissioner, Bill Keegan, Town Manager, Gabby Jordan, Staff Planner, and me. So we all met, we had a presentation given to us, similar to what the board saw at their meeting, just the general overview. Bill Buckley presented it. And I'm just going to quickly go over the highlights. As Leah said, this letter is long and there's more in here than these comments, so we recommend folks take a look at it. And as, just a caution, a lot of these comments are the weeds, as Leah called it, rather than up in the clouds. So some of these things you'll hear aren't necessarily, you can count on the Board of Appeals taking care of this. They have a lot of experience with 40Bs, you know, through having gone through the lodge and the domain. And when I started here, they were dealing with the one across from Stop and Shop, and I was so impressed at how thorough and they brought in consultants. They do their homework. So in that regard, you are in good hands with the zoning board and they do not take their job lightly, so in case folks are concerned with that. So on to the departments. The Board of Health, since the site is on sewer, they really don't have any concerns about wastewater. The only thing they were mentioned is that if dumpsters are to be used to ensure that they're away from the buildings, and that's more of a fire hazard issue. From the Police Department, and I know the chief is there and we have spoken about this, there's been, there were a couple of issues. One was with respect to public access. Since we know this is going to be adjacent to open space, but we believe at the recommendation of the DPW, this will remain a private road, we just need to be very clear on whether there will be public access and if not postings and whatnot, because the Police Department just don't want it to, you know, be perceived as public and then have constant concerns with neighbors. And then there was also a discussion of perhaps to also make any future issues clear, that if this is an ownership project, that perhaps it should be clear on whether rentals are allowed or not, just so that there aren't disputes down the road. And that would be more likely a private matter through the Homeowners Association, but something that should be considered. And the Police Chief could certainly chime in if I got any of that wrong. Just to summarize the Fire Department, I mean, they want more information on the bridge and they support a looping of the water line. They're mentioning that the fire protection system will be provided for sprinklers, it's required for the four unit buildings, and they're going to try to get them for all of the units or the two family units. So, and the one interesting note that David Larissy brought up, which I thought was really interesting, and I hadn't necessarily thought it through at this point, was that by having a development in this area, that is somewhat of a challenging area in the community in the sense that there's some abandoned businesses over by the bleachery and we have some environmental and other concerns over there, by having some investment over there might raise, start to raise the level of interest and sort of raise up the property values and the desire to invest around it. So that would be an offshoot that honestly, I hadn't thought that far ahead of, but that's interesting. And I know that fire has to deal with some issues out there. I know they fought a fire out that way. So they're pretty more, a lot more aware of the conditions out in that neck of woods, but I do think it is a challenging area for all of us that we have to start looking at. Conservation Commission. The site is within a priority habitat of rare turtles. It's a 200-foot riverfront area, bordering land subject to flooding, a floodplain, bordering vegetated wetlands, isolated wetland, and there's a 25-foot no-activity zone. So it is a constrained site. Interestingly enough, Jane Pierce, the Conservation Agent, mentioned another positive thing was that having folks be out there, there is a lot of concerns with ATVs and other vehicles, and it's a real enforcement challenge up there. So having folks live nearby, they tend to act more as stewards. So she actually mentioned that as a positive for the site. She did note that the site had been previously permitted and they were able to overcome all the requirements of all the environmental challenges, so that was an interesting note. And that, she noted that the developer said that they had designed around these sensitive areas, so, but she was just noting what they said. Water Department is seeking a loop of the water line, and that would be worked out. And there's a whole lot of technical water stuff that I don't think we need to get into. DPW, they want the stormwater bylaw to be met, even though it's a local bylaw. Also subdivision design standards should be met. They would like the water line loop per the Water Department's recommendation. This is one, something I hadn't seen, is that there's a concern about the sewer main immediately downstream from this project. So that would be something that would have to be looked at, increasing capacity. And there was a concern about the bridge, that it's 15 feet in width and that there would be insufficient room for two cars to pass. They're recommending the road remain private and not eligible for town services. And then they requested some information on sightline and visibility, but they did not think the traffic would be a major concern, just because it would go both towards Manfield and towards town. And then in the Planning Department, we just talked more about technical things, that we want to make, excuse me, make sure these units are preserved in perpetuity. You know, we don't want any expiration of the affordability. And then I just pointed out that the board and the town does have the ability to look at different ratios of affordability. I mean, 40B has a minimum standard, but certainly the town can look at other standards. And then I did go into the resident input, they were seeking a sidewalk. That's the one, I know we've gotten a couple more emails since then, but when this letter was issued, we had one, and she's seeking a sidewalk, particularly as it goes towards the elementary school. I think that sums it up, Leah.
All right, great. Everyone's had a chance to review this in full. It's been available for a while. So, and again, to the public, this whole document that Paige just summarized is available with a link right on the town homepage. So with that, I have some questions, but I think I'll let you guys, if you, you know, want to shoot questions out or, you know, things that you want to talk through. But for me, like the way, over the last week and a half, two weeks, I've really been trying to think, you know, we need to think to the benefits to the town outweigh, you know, what some of the drawbacks may be, just, you know, kind of looking at all those. You know, I've definitely thought of my own pros and cons in my head and, you know, some open questions that we definitely still have too. And then, you know, again, just now that you gentlemen are at the table, I don't think that we intend, if we ever do move forward with this, it's not stamping the 59 units. That is all to be vetted. You know, that could come down with the Zoning Board of Appeals, but we would not be promoting those type of details in the plan, just the conceptual LIP.
We understand. Paige did a terrific job with this planist report, and she brought it up in the report too. And it's important to note that if the Board of Selectmen support this, it's not an approval of the project.
Right.
They're just telling the state that it meets the housing needs of Foxborough, but the actual approval is through the Board of Appeals in the comprehensive permit process. So it's not approved by the Board of Selectmen. It's just, they're letting the state know that they support it for the purpose of meeting the needs of Foxborough.
And those that may not be as familiar with how that process would work, you know, the Zoning Board of Appeals would then have certain pieces they were looking at to make sure that the project complies with statutory and regulatory requirements of affordable housing and that there is a safe, healthy, beneficial environment that satisfies the residential needs of the inhabitants. So there would again be public hearings, and I would imagine, Paige, what is that, like a six-month process usually with the Zone of Appeals? So, you know, there would be input and a lot of discussions at that time as well about some of the, you know, kind of, we'll call it in the weeds of the project. All right, so I think Steph and, you know, go ahead and just, two questions, did you guys have, or?
I'll start. So since we last met, I've been doing a lot of investigating, asking questions. I'll be honest with you, it's very hard to think of us getting behind a project that, you know, as we've just been talking about, that we really don't have any say in. And that, so, you know, I don't like the process we're going. I'm going to start off with, I don't think this is good for the town, and these are the reasons why. I asked a little bit about 40Bs, friendly 40Bs. Someone that works very intensively with them, he told me I would fight for any 40B in a town. But this is where we are in Foxborough. We've met our 10%, we're at 12 and a half percent. I've heard Paige mention housing crisis. I don't feel like it's the town of Foxborough's responsibility to take care of the housing crisis, because we're not taking care of, there's no guarantee that we're taking care of anybody who lives in Foxborough. So we're going to do all this, and you know what? There are surrounding towns around us who have not met, and those are the towns that should be stepping up. The town of Foxborough worked very hard to get to that level. Now, with that being said, what happens is the impact on adding such high density on such a small piece of property, everybody else in town picks up. Your taxes pay for what that does to services. So if, I'm not saying this one, this one project is going to throw us over the top, but we have a lot of projects coming down the line. So when we find out that, oops, we need to, maybe need to throw a couple more policemen on, you know, I know right now, Chief Grace and Chief Kelleher, you would probably say, oh, we can handle another small development in town, but we have other developments coming. And so when these services need to be upped, it ends up being everybody else in town. It's your taxes that will pay for that, because the affordable ones don't pay the same tax rate, first of all. I've learned to try to find out a little bit more how this works. And it just, you know, is that true Paige?
They're assessed and pay the same residential rate? Again, remember, these are not rental units. So while I believe that's true for like the Walnut Street project.
Oh, I'm not saying they don't pay taxes, but they don't pay, the affordable, I was told, don't pay the same.
Well, can we address that? Is that, I want to, if anything's right or wrong, I just want to make sure that we're addressing stuff that, you know, along the way. Is that, is that true?
Well, it depends on the assessed value of the property.
Right, but they pay the same tax rate.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, yeah, there's no different tax rate.
Not, but you're not paying the same, that home is going to be assessed because it's affordable. It's going to be assessed.
At a lower amount, yes.
Exactly.
Why would that be? If it's the same as a unit next to it that's not affordable, would the assessment be different? If they're exactly the same, except one's affordable, one's not?
Well, it's based on how the property was sold. So you have, and if it's considered to be a permanently limited value property based on the way that the development has been put together, the answer is yes. It would be limited in value.
I thought the same thing, Steph, until I asked somebody and they told me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I thought the same, the property would be worth the properties were. So here's the thing, I don't have any problem with the Zoning Board of Appeals, you know, this going through the standard process, and if they okay it, what I feel like we're doing is we're changing the zoning bylaw. There's a reason why we have a zoning bylaw in town, and it was voted on by the people. So, you know, you made an investment in this property. I don't begrudge anyone making a good deal, but so when the property was bought, I'm assuming you knew that you could, unless you went this route, you could put two or three houses on there. I, you know, I don't know exactly.
It was permitted too for some commercial things down in the past.
Yeah, because I know there's a lot of wetlands there. So I don't know what exactly could have been on there, but certainly not 52 units by going, you know, without going this route. Now, we've met our quota, and this is not saying it's going to take care. We have no say on who buys those units. So you're asking the people who live in town, who pay taxes, to pick up the difference, because that's how the 40B will, that's how 40Bs work in general. The state mandates it, you have to have X amount in town, and so, and that's good. I'm not against all 40Bs, but we've met where we need to be. So the more we go above that is going to be a strain on everybody else pays taxes here. And so for me, you know, we're supposed to be working for the taxpayers in our town, not so we don't have to make Foxborough, so somebody, if you can't afford to live in Foxborough, you can't afford to live in Foxborough, or if there isn't housing. I mean, I'd love to live in other places too that I couldn't afford. So we're being asked to get behind something and not vote on something, but support it? I'm sorry, I don't support it. I don't support it as the plan is. And if we don't have any say in changing that, it'll go, it's hard for me to get behind something. And I don't think it's, you know, honestly, I think this is a builder-friendly project. How do you pronounce it? Is it Sae, Sae? Am I pronouncing it right? I think Mr. Sae is basically.
Sae, right?
With the G on the end?
Sae.
Sae, okay. So, I mean, you, you know, you produced all the numbers for us. It looks to me like you're going to make a hefty sum, which, and I don't begrudge you for that, that's business, but the rest of the town is going to pay for that in taxes and services, not just by your project, by all the projects that are coming up. I don't think it's good for the town, because we're not taking care of the town. I know last night I got a chance to, I was working the night of the Planning Board meeting, so I did get a chance to watch it. You know, they sent, you know, they gave us a letter, but, you know, I mean, Jeff's here, so I don't want to speak for the Planning Board, but it wasn't like, wow, this is great, let's do it. You know, Paige kind of spoon-fed them a way to at least give us that you thought it was viable. Not that you fully supported it, that it was viable. So I don't come tonight feeling like, oh, and the Planning Board really supports this. I'm not saying they do or don't, but it didn't, watching the meeting, it didn't come across that way to me. So I don't even, can't sit here tonight and say, well, the Planning Board loves this project. And they may, when they, they want to hear more information. So they could change their minds. I don't want to speak for the Planning Board, but what I watched last night just didn't tip me, you know, in that direction. You know, the more I'm finding out about this project, I'm not saying it wouldn't be a beautiful project. I'm not saying you guys, you know, I mean, I know somebody from the Planning Board mentioned a sidewalk, you know, I'm not sure, but we're talking, if a sidewalk were to go in to go to the Borough School, I mean, you're talking millions of dollars. I mean, the roads would have to be widened.
Well, there's already a sidewalk up until Moore's Place, so it's from that place forward.
But there's enough a lot of more room, so.
So, can I just, because I just want to point out one thing that I learned that was eye-opening for me. As I've had some of these conversations, because something, like you said, you know, with the tax rate or not knowing. I didn't know that the lodge and the Avalon for our 10%, let's, I'm going to use round numbers here, okay? Let's say there's 500 apartments in the lodge, but only 100 of them are affordable. All 500 apartments, so even the market rate ones go to our affordable numbers. So I'm not saying that sways it either way, but to me, that was something that I didn't know, that was just interesting, that, yeah, we've met our affordable numbers, but you know, there could literally be hundreds of units at the lodge and the Avalon that are market rate units that, you know, go into those affordable housing numbers.
So because the market rate is affordable?
No, I think it's just because of the project. Maybe Paige, you'll probably do a better job at explaining that.
So the 40B loophole is that rental projects, all the units in a rental project, whether affordable or not, count towards the inventory. So that's why developers love to come in and, you know, throw up 250 units, that's the maximum number, 250 units in a town of our size. So that is true. The number is, we have 498 of the town's 878 affordable units are in the lodge and Sylvan, and only 125 of those are quote unquote affordable. The rest are market rate, and the market rate are not affordable, we know, but, so yeah, that is a loophole. On ownership projects, only the affordable units count towards the inventory.
But, I mean, if you told me that we could create affordable housing for residents in town, I might feel differently. But this, there is no guarantee that anybody in town, that not one person in town will live in this development. There's no guarantee.
There's the local, there's the local preference in here. There's, there's the local, there's the local preference in here.
That's right, there's a local preference in here.
Yeah, there is a local preference in here that they would, we would, there is a guarantee in here.
There is a local preference that the town, people that live here get first preference.
Yes.
Okay, and don't forget, these units in this project, what qualifies here, because we're in the Boston band, is people making 60,000 to 90,000 a year, okay? And then, if you don't mind, I'd like to address your other comments. I had this permitted by the planning board back in '08 for 33 units of office slash warehouses. That's by right. I can go back and do that. I can build warehouses there. I just thought the best thing for the town, because of the housing shortage now, is housing. Secondly of all, even with some of the reduced taxes on the affordable units, it's still over 300,000 to 350,000 dollars a year to the town. So, it's not the other taxpayers in town that are paying for these things, it's the people that live there. And that's a big difference. Okay, you're not asking, you're not asking the town to pay for these things. These people pay their taxes, like everybody else in town. And they're paying their own fair share. So, it's not costing anybody else anything.
Well, what I was told, and this is someone who works directly with 40Bs and, and friendly 40Bs, is, he said, the tax money that comes in will never cover what it'll do, do, do to your, you know, and, and, you know, there's a, you know.
We don't know what this will look like, so I, well, I agree with that. I just think that's a very broad-brush statement to say, when we don't even know how many would end up being affordable or not. So, I get what you're saying in concept, but, you know, I just worry about stating things like that as fact, when we don't know what this would even look like to know what the fact would be.
Okay, well, it's someone who works with these, who, who basically said, that's a general statement. And, and that's what I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces here. So, we, you don't know who will live in these, okay? So, let me ask you something, okay? I mean, we could have all singles there, and there wouldn't be an issue, okay? We're talking three-bedroom homes. So, we could have families with two to three kids, okay? So, what will that do to the schools?
We can't, we can't discriminate against anyone with kids, so we can't even talk about that.
No, I'm not saying discriminating, but if they do move in, we will be building another elementary school or putting on, I'm not saying discriminating. There is, you, that's what I'm saying, you don't know who will be there. So, the, you know, I was told there's kind of an equation that you use to, for maybe generally what, what the market would be. You know, you know, 52 units times three people, or times three and a half, because someone might have four, someone might have two kids. So, all I'm, all I'm saying is, it's a lot of homes for a small piece of land with lots of other projects going, going on. And, and I understand, we can't, we can't ask you to scale back your project, that's fine. So, for me, as it stands, I think it's too much. And, and, and I've also told that some of these, where you do have some businesses with residential together, you actually bring in more money from the business tax than you do from the residential.
Well, it's a higher rate.
Yeah, so, I mean, listen, I, I am by no means an expert in any of this stuff. I'm asking questions, I'm gathering information. I, you know, it's, you know, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, 'cause I missed the, so, can, can you just, can you just tell me? I missed the, about.
The local preference.
About preference.
Right.
It's, it's in here, I remember reading it.
It is in this.
Can you, can you tell me what it is?
I'll tell you. It's, it's through the, the, we, zoning board can require a request, and I think that would be something, they've done that on the Lodge and the Domain, and I believe Nadia, that you can request up to 70% of the units to be reserved for town residents, employees, teachers, such.
And that's at the first pass. Once it goes in the market and resale, that's gone, but on the first initial offering.
So, I mean, I mean, like I said too, I mean, honestly, I don't, I don't know a ton about how the zoning board of appeals works. I know they'll, like Paige said, they'll work hard. You know, my father-in-law was on it many years ago. They talk about hardships, you know, what the soil is, different stuff. I mean, technically, based on what our zoning is, I'm not even sure if the zoning board of appeals should, should let this project go through. That's for them to decide. But, based on what, you know, Bill, maybe you can answer this. I mean, what I've been told, there's things like, you know, if you, if you're landlocked, if you have, if there's something with the soil, maybe the, the, the piece of property, you know, maybe, maybe you should put it here, but they might say, okay, you've got ledge there, we'll let you put it here. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, but.
I can interrupt, can I interrupt on this?
I just don't, I don't think it should be here.
I know, I just, I wanna be cautious before we get started, just about.
Yeah.
Well, not saying things as fact that we don't, like, like, we're here to talk, you know, if, we need to look at the pressure on taxpayers, we need to look at this, but I just wanna be careful in saying things as how it will be if, if we're just not.
Well, what, what you can do, and I understand where Stephanie's coming from. She's, she's stating, you know, variances versus special permitting. This is a little different. But, what the board can do, and has every right to do in this case of an application, is they can, they can make recommendations based on what they've heard from the various boards, committees, and departments. They can make recommendations or conditions when they submit their application. What they should do is if they decide to, to make recommendations that are reasonable. I mean, obviously, we have, we have a developer, and those recommendations should, are gonna be based on economics. It's all about the money, life's about money, you know? Can the, 'cause the developer can always say, okay, I'm gonna, I can't afford those, whatever those requirements are, and I'm gonna take a different route than the, than the Lip. That's Mr. Sae's option to do that, if, if it's not feasible anymore. But, this is, this type of program is something that is negotiable. There's no such thing at this point. And, the chairman of the zoning board is, I know his philosophy, I know Mr. Overt's philosophy. He doesn't believe in a friendly 40B. He'll be the first to tell you, it's not friendly at this point. The town has all the leverage because we've reached that 10%. So, it, it becomes a negotiation point, okay? So, we negotiate, but it's always about the money, you know? So, we, but, we want, we wanna make this work for the town and for the developer. We wanna give a good product, and everybody walks away happy. And we want, you know, we've got, we wanna meet that 25% affordable rate, somewhere between 275 and 300,000 dollars affordable. That's a goal. But anyway, you can condition this, when you, if you support it, you can condition it, you can make recommendations. If you do, what you wanna do is make those conditions that are, that can be written into the conditions of the zoning board of appeals permit. This is important, because those conditions that are part of the comprehensive permit are recorded. Okay, your conditions are not, they just go to the state. But you want those recorded so that they are in the condition of the permit and therefore enforce them. That's an important note. Okay, okay, so, because they might, I, I remember, we've had seven, since I was commissioner, we had seven comprehensive permits. It's hard to believe, but.
And a comprehensive permit as a 40B, I didn't really.
As a straight, standard 40B. We've had seven of them. Sorry, but, you know, Domain, Domain, Lodge, Nadia Estates that you brought up. You had one on Baker Street, it was the Housing Authority. The one at Crossman Stop and Shop, you had. It was Ronco Cassett, Community Way. I know, I had several encountered them. Some of them big, some of them small. I hated them, 'cause I had to enforce them, you know? I hated them. But anyway, but I saw the good in them too, for, for whatever reason. So, this one's a little different, the Lip's different. You know, it's a negotiable one. The other one wasn't. You were required to do it, 'cause we weren't at 10%, but we wanna work with the town. Anyway, so that was, that's my suggestion, but it's not like, okay, we're supporting it, you can condition it. Reasonable conditions, because at some point you can say, goodbye. You know, we're gonna come, go the other route. We can do that, so.
Yeah, I have a bunch of comments, but before I start, where in the process do we put some things into? Do we hear zoning first and?
No, now, in this process, you know, you're gonna do site visit, then you gotta put this whole thing together. When you, if you send a letter of support to mass housing and community development, that's when you would put in your conditions requirement, if you feel it's appropriate.
And from what I understand, they can be like vague, right? Like, we're not supporting the number of units. I don't think we have to give a number of units, 'cause I don't.
No, you wouldn't.
Told any of us know what.
Yeah, you wouldn't do it at this level.
Your charge is to look at this from a 30,000-foot view.
Right, right.
Okay?
And I guess that's what I mostly wanna talk about right now, is, is, I think, Steph, unfortunately, you're getting into the weeds a little bit. And I think too much right now.
I can answer your question, exactly, specifically. Paige, on the last page of her report, Paige, on the last page of her report, put together a list of well-thought-up things that you'd wanna consider for recommendations.
I was just curious, we're along the process, do we?
This pro.
We're doing it now.
This is what you would do.
Then it goes to the state, they do their thing for three or four months. And then it comes back to the ZBA, who deal with the street-level stuff. The number of units, you know, the type of construction, all kinds of things.
Right.
Okay.
So, from a bird's-eye view, and I, I can't disagree with Steph any more than I, I'm about to. We have a housing crunch in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I don't expect Foxborough to take care of that crunch. But if we got an opportunity where we can have some additional housing in an area that's a suburb of Boston that's very hot, I think that's huge. Second of all, we've got a towns person who, you know, we've been talking about, Paige has been preaching affordable housing for probably as long as she's been here. And I think Mr. Sae heard her and said, you know, I got this property here that maybe we can work together and, and get some housing into the town that's not seven figures. And I think Mr. Sae's done a great job. I mean, the proposal we saw two, well, four weeks ago now, was, was, I think, phenomenal and, and well-thought-out, and, and his team of experts, I think, was phenomenal. So, I think conceptually, that's what we as a town, I think, should embrace.
Right.
Are there conditions? Yeah, Paige had a bunch of them at the end that I think are, are very good. We'll make sure that we get them in, or we'll discuss it to add them in the appropriate time. But conceptually, where this town has been going for the last five and a half years I've been on the board and had my finger on the pulse is housing. And I, and, and I think this fits the need, let alone the fact that Mr. Sae's a businessman. He put a business proposal together. He wouldn't be in front of us if it was four 2.5 million dollar homes. He's in front of us, 'cause he's trying to work with us to develop in an area of Foxborough that could use some development. It's next to, you know, it's towards the Mansfield border, it's near the train station. I mean, all that good stuff that people, I think, are gonna tear down the walls to try to get, you know, a, a, a place to live in that area who wanna commute into Boston.
You know, I haggle over a four-person coma tent for my kids. So, I, I can't afford these houses, you know, so, yeah, it's, I, I hear the prices. And we all know that development costs, just for land, is ridiculous, so. You have to, you have to put a lot of homes on a small parcel to make it work.
And they're about, with the exception of the affordable side, you know, did you say 5, 550?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, 30 years ago, that's a billion, million years home, but nowadays, that's an affordable home. I know my son, who's soon to be 27, would be happy to get into a 550,000 dollar home, as, as a starter home, you know, sad as the real estate prices are now. So, in, in today's market, that's affordable.
The other thing is, because there's such a lack of supply in the whole state, but definitely in this town as well, a couple of weeks ago, there were four houses for sale. If you come on with 50 units, that may take the pressure off some of the other homes rising as quickly as they've been rising. I mean, you, you can see what's for sale in town and for what the prices are, it's insane. But it's a perfect storm. There's lack of supply, the cost of new construction is out of control, and the interest rates are low. That's a perfect storm. That's why these prices are going through the ceiling. But if you can relieve some of that not much inventory, that may take the pressure off some of the rising prices.
And just one last note. Any new building, any new construction coming into town, isn't gonna strain the infrastructure of the town, police, fire, water, it's gonna change it. And that's what our job is, to accommodate those changes as maybe Wall Street gets developed. I know there's some trucks in there that are working, or Mr. Sae's project, or any other project that's on the board, and maybe will be there two, three, four years from now, that will be those selectmen's job at that time, to deal with the issues of a bigger town or more people in town. And I think that's just the nature of, of, of growth in any community.
I'm just not sure that the town wants to grow, Doc. And I'm not saying yes or no. I mean, the housing production plan said in 2030, we'd be at 18,000. We're over 18,000 now. So, I, I don't know, the people I talked to in town, I didn't grow up in town. I grew up in a bigger, bigger town than Foxborough. Not a city, but a bigger town, but all I hear people talk about is the small-town charm, Foxborough. And, you know, and for me, I mean, we'll, we'll see what happens. I mean, that's what I mean, there's just so many moving parts to this. And, you know, you say I'm getting into the weeds, well, I have to think of what the next step is and what the weeds might be. And I know a lot of that is gonna be out of, out of my control. I'm not gonna be able, I'm not gonna be voting yes or no on, on this project. It's gonna be the zoning board of appeals. But, I just, as a sitting selectman now, do I wanna hear five years from now, somebody come up to me and say, jeez, when your kids were in school, there were 20 or 22 kids in a classroom? My kid's F-30 in a classroom. I don't want, there's been, there's a reason why the bylaw is, is in place, and people have voted that. If we went to town meeting and the town decided to change the bylaw, I'd have no problem with this. I can only go by what has been established and how this town was established to grow. You know, I mean, right now, you're supposed to have an acre to build on unless you go in and get, you know, in different areas of town. So, I know what you're saying, I'm, I'm stepping ahead, but I, I have to, for me to sit back here and say, okay, I need to think about what's gonna, what's the next steps are gonna be and what the impact will be on the town. I mean, it, I mean, granted, I think, I think Jimmy might have told me, it might have been 1968, when, when the town voted the bylaw, and I don't know if you know that Paige, or, maybe it is time to readdress it. But, the people who do live in town, they've moved to Foxborough for a reason. Because it, maybe 'cause it's a, you know, what, what, what did everyone say? It's like, it's a, this small town with great charm, and we have a football stadium in it, right? How crazy is that? So, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying about getting a little ahead of myself, but unfortunately, this is, these are what the next steps are gonna be. And so, that's why I'm trying to find out, how does this work? 'Cause I really didn't, didn't know a lot of, a lot of how this would go down. Alls I know is, I don't think people have come before the board of selectmen before for us to bless a project. You know, even just to say, I mean, you go through.
Because they were all unfriendly for it, because we weren't, so we're at a different point in time now. That they have to.
All the projects prior to this were under 10%.
The one in Crossman Stop and Shop, we don't have any say.
Yeah.
So, that's why they've never come in front of the board of selectmen.
Couldn't, couldn't just go about, about applying, going to the state, going then to the board of, zoning board of appeals with, without, without us? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, you had said, there's been none in front of us before, and I'm saying, there's one in front of us now, 'cause now we've reached that 10%. That's, that's, it was not, they didn't have to.
It could've went that way.
Is that the process that he has?
Let's let, let's let Doc have something.
But wait a minute, on, on two of your points. One, zoning was done in 1968, which is a heck of a long time ago. And I really think Paige has had her finger on the pulse of, with the various surveys she's been putting out and what a lot of the townspeople are saying. How many surveys have you put out since you've? How many surveys have you put out since you've been here, Paige? You know, six, seven, eight?
Yeah, well, about housing, probably at least three.
And what are you hearing? You're hearing what, why Mr. Sage is here today, that we need more housing in the town, more affordable housing.
And I just keep thinking, you know, I go back and forth on this, I, you know, positives, negatives, if we do nothing, what changes?
Nothing.
Paige and I have talked so much about housing, and we can talk and talk and talk about it, but if we do nothing, what changes? And I don't think anyone's looking to change the zoning of the town, and the zoning's here for a reason, and that's absolutely it. But if there's a spot in town where, you know, maybe, maybe that particular area's not, you know, needs a little bit of polishing, or, you know, maybe it's close to public transportation, I don't think anyone's looking to let the floodgates go and, you know, that this is going to change the zoning, or the next project's going to come, you know, come in like this. It's not like, oh, we're looking for all the we can get after this. You know, I don't think this is about the zoning in town, it's about, you know, this specific site, this specific project, and I would just pose the question, if we do nothing, and we live in a world and in a town where we don't want any change and we don't adapt to anything, what happens? Because do we have any, you know, we've got a list of apartments that are here, but those are different than new houses. You know, Lawson Farms was built, Weston Estates was built, Lawton Farms, do we have any new ownership on the radar, kind of after Souza? You know, part of our budget is, is new growth, too, so, you know, as I, I kind of, I think the same things you do.
Yeah.
And then on the other side, I think, like, part of our budget is new growth. You know, with COVID, there's not a lot of commercial stuff going on, you know, so where are we going? Because, you know, if we do nothing, what changes? All the changes is, the housing crunch continues, it exacerbates even further, house prices go up, you know.
So probably the most significant comment people have said to me about this, if we do nothing, what do you say to your kids when they grow up and want to build, still live in town?
They have no place to live.
And they can't afford it.
And they don't have no place to live. And then, and what do you say to your parents who want to move out of their house and have no place to go? So this is really why this is before you, is to address what has been told to us on numerous occasions by people, just average people in town, saying, I want to move out of my house, but I can't, because I want to stay in Foxborough, but I can't. I don't, I can't afford what I got, I don't want to take care of what I got, I'd rather go to a smaller place and live in a place that I can afford and stay in Foxborough. So there is the challenge we face on that point, Stephanie, because I think, I understand your points completely. I think, the point that I think Leah just made is perfect, is that if we do nothing, that's the biggest problem we've had in this town for years, is that you've created one set of housing stock, and now that's unaffordable to most people who are here, who want to stay here, or maybe, or maybe even try to grow up here, if they can.
And part of our budget every year, that's where I thought you were going, but.
Yeah, well, it's true.
But part of the budget, too, as Leah alluded to, is new growth. This is new growth. This is what we look for when we're going forward with our budget year to year.
I mean, even the ones, the houses that are on Souza, I think those were starting at 500,000, just like, from me watching the market, I think the last one sold in the 700s. Like, there is a need for this. People are spending that kind of money because there's no stock. You know, we're at single-digit houses, single-digit numbers on the market, and there's so many people, you know, like, you know, my parents' age, that, you know, maybe want to sell, but then it's like, well, where the heck do I go?
That's a challenge.
I, I'm trying to keep an open-minded hat on it, on all this, and look at the pros and cons, you know? If we do nothing, what changes? The prices continue to go up, you know? With the pond and the bleachery over there, you know, none of you guys are in that area, but it's not the, the, no, no, I'm saying, you don't live at the bleachery, but like, way, way out there, it's not, you, no one would say that that's the prettiest area of town.
That's our neighborhood.
Yeah, right. It could probably use a little bit of polishing up down, down the end with the bleachery.
No.
Okay, okay. I mean, I.
Do you realize, have you been down there, do you realize what's down there, the wildlife that's down there that's going to be impacted?
Yeah, the conservation agent.
You know, the, the amount of traffic? We already have now, that people have, from the development that they put off of, up on Cochasse Street, the big, huge development, they cut through more street to go to me.
Well, just, let's hold some of this stuff. No, hold on. We, this is a meeting that, yeah, just, if we can just hold some of that, I'm talking about, like, the bleachery. Bill and I were talking about the bleachery. What the heck do we do with the bleachery right now, you know? So I'm kind of thinking, as, as this area of town, you know, maybe gets some new life, maybe that is further opportunities for the bleachery. I get there's traffic, I get there's wildlife, you know, I'm weighing all the pros and cons, and that's just something that has entered my mind, you know, the bleachery is like, what, you know, what are we gonna, what's going to happen with the bleachery?
It's a significant issue.
It's an issue, for sure.
Which building is the bleachery?
The bleachery is, is right past this property.
Across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
It's Mansfield.
It was an old factory.
Yeah.
That now has multiple tenants in it.
There's a gym.
But part of the building is falling apart.
Oh, swear that, I don't think there's a gym there now, I think that closed.
I think that's gone.
It could be, I was by there, I took a tour.
It was in there, I'm not sure if it's open now.
It closed like a year and a half ago.
I think so.
I took a, I took a tour of it just last week, and I can tell you, it's, it needs a lot of help.
I think, yeah, there was a fire there, was there, am I making that up? Was there a fire there? Yeah. So I don't think, you know, neighbors, we're here to hear you, and we're going to let you guys speak, okay? You're, you know, although this isn't the public hearing, we're certainly going to let you speak, but, but we're going to run a meeting that's going to be respectful and civil, and we're all going to be able to, you know, say what we want to, we're not here, we're all in the same community, we're all here to work together, we're all here to look at everything. No one's made a decision yet, so I think we need to have, you know, conversations that...
Well, that's what I.
Yeah, can you, can you come up?
I don't want to go there.
Well, then we, then.
You have to.
Yeah, yeah, go up and say your name and where you live.
Have to.
I'm Joyce and Barrow, I live at 85 Moore Street, I've been there for 41 years. When we bought our home, it was a beautiful place, the kids rode their bikes up and down, no problem. It has changed so much, I understand change, okay? We have people cutting through, they come from Sharon, they use Moore Street to cut over to Mansfield, okay? More and more, there's more building down in Mansfield, they come, we can't even get out of our driveway. You back up to go out of your driveway, and before you know it, there's somebody on your bumper. Traffic is horrendous, 18-wheelers go by the whole nine yards. We do not need any more traffic on Moore Street. There, conservation is out behind us, that's why we bought, it's beautiful down there, it was quiet. You've got the swans down at the pond, you've got otters, there's even been a beaver down there. Has anybody seen a beaver in Foxborough?
Your neighbor has.
Seriously, yeah, yeah, okay. Who is going to be moving into down there? They're going to tie into sewer. We weren't allowed to tie into sewer, yes.
What are you implying by who is going to move in down there? What does that mean?
Who it's going to attract. It says 40B, we have enough 40B, okay?
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, we can't, we can't, I can't.
I understand that, I understand that.
But I think that that's a lot of the misconception, unfortunately, is that, I'll just leave.
Well, like you said, Foxborough people are going to be allowed to buy. Are they going to be allowed to buy?
We already determined that.
You're talking $550,000 homes? You talk about no place to, no place to live in Foxborough. I have watched so many houses knocked down, cute little bungalows, cute little cottages, knocked down, and big, huge houses built.
Because of the housing crisis.
Because of what we're talking about.
Exactly, right.
That's exactly why it's happening.
But big, huge houses, but you say people can't afford to stay in Foxborough. So I don't get it, why don't you refurbish those little houses and let the people?
That's not, that's not, we don't do that, we're not developers.
No, 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 I'm not saying you. I'm not saying you.
I'll explain to you why that, that doesn't happen. The cost of land has gone from $30,000 an acre.
I understand that.
To $300,000 an acre now.
I understand that, yeah.
So that is, but if you, if you sold that property, they wouldn't be buying it for the house that sits on it, they're buying it for the land. That's the issue.
I understand that, I just.
So they're not going to, they're not going to refurbish a 200, $100,000 home for a $300,000 piece of property.
But, all right, so you say the zoning, the zoning board has the say of what basically gets built, or?
How it gets built.
Housing, you know, how it gets built and whatnot. So I don't get it, so you take a little house and build a huge, giant house? How does that, I'm.
That's allowed by Rite, whereas, that's not Zoning Board of Appeals. The house on that lot, they are allowed to tear down and put something up, so they're...
I know, but I've always thought you had to put the same footprint.
No.
No, that's not accurate.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, then, well, that knows.
And I hate to tell you, by the time this, this process goes through, the two bedrooms in Summerfield are going for over six now, so probably by the time this goes through, these 585s are probably going to be seven, because.
So if we do nothing, Steph, just sitting here, putting on that, that side of the hat, what happens? What's the answer?
I'm just, I'm just saying, it, I mean, I guess that's, that's just, if you can afford to live somewhere, you buy there, I guess. I mean, I love to live in a lot of places that I just can't afford to live in, so I stay where I am.
You wouldn't leave Foxborough, come on.
No. No, I couldn't drag, I couldn't drag Jimmy out of Foxborough.
Paige has a question.
Well, I just want to address, you know, you all know I'm a broker record on housing, but to Steph's comment, you know, I hear, I heard that a lot, that refrain of like, well, we couldn't afford to live in, you know, Westwood, so we came out here, we couldn't do that. That was all, you know, 40 years ago, 30 years ago, 20 years ago, and I think we will all agree that right now, this housing crisis is something that, that, you know, we've never seen, and none of us really knows what to do with it exactly. But, you know, I have heard, like Bill, I hear the seniors in town that are stuck in their big homes, and they would love to buy one of those little bungalows, but they're competing with the developers for those $300,000 lots. And alternatively, they can't really take on a redevelopment to make that bungalow handicap accessible or whatnot, that's not something that's usually in most seniors' bag of tricks. So that's really the voices we've been hearing, and to address the zoning issue, zoning that the town voted on was created under what's called Chapter 40A. Well, this is 40B, and 40B came after 40A because they saw what all the communities do, which is, you know, basically through our zoning, we create snob zoning. We have one-acre lots, what that is, what I said in my memo there is, is true, with a $300,000 lot, you basically have to build something north of $750,000 price tag, probably closer to 900 in this market. So with, no one really wants to see a density, we certainly don't want to change the zoning, no one is talking about a blanket change, like Leah said, it's a case-by-case basis, but this is the only way to sort of, to move the dial a little bit and provide some of these smaller houses. That's what we're talking about really, is smaller housing units, 1,500 feet or less, because that's not being built in a market where one-acre lots, which are the really, most of the lots in Foxborough, really have to sell for almost a million dollars. So I'll get off my soapbox, but that, 40B was directly designed to address the, the problems of 40A, so we are not going, and, and it was Greg Speer from the Housing Authority who kind of said that at the Walnut Street meeting, kind of saying that, it was like, 40B is another mechanism, just like 40A is, so it's not doing something wrong, it's, it's a tool that was given to towns to create affordable housing, and this one is in your control, unlike all the other ones. So that's why this is different, and that's why, I mean, I know the neighbors are there, and I understand that, but, you know, go talk to some of the seniors at the senior center, talk to all the people that came to all our conversations on housing, you know, they're not necessarily here, but they're out there, and just talk to them, because there really are varied voices, and I do think that this site, you know, it could be all worked out, but it is, you know, something that could perhaps be managed by the community, you know, with the least amount of impact. It also, so I, one more thing I want to say is, to the neighbors, is just be rare, I mean, that is industrial zoned, and so when you're worried about traffic and trucks and whatnot, you know, the amount of cars from a, whatever number of unit development that goes out there is probably going to be a lot different than, you know, a major industrial use, where you're going to have landscaper trucks go in there, or 18-wheelers or whatnot, so just a cautionary tale, and I think the folks on Fisher Street saw that, too, you know, they did it, ended up with a project, so that's the, the alternative. It's not that there's nothing going to be out there, something will be developed on that site. This is one proposal, if this is not a build, there will be other traffic. It's not like, we're not, we don't get to choose like nothing or this, it is something will go there, and this is just the one on the table right now.
And that's right, you know, the way I look at it is, I look at all the pluses and minuses, and I think of the exact same things that everyone's talking about, what's it going to do to the, the town, you know, services, what's it going to do to the beaver, what's it going to do, you know, to the traffic that's going on? And then I also think, you know, on, on the other side, if we do nothing, what happens? Nothing happens. Do we want to be a town? You know, how many towns around us does the population not go up at all in, you know, however many years?
Well, many, yeah.
You know, is that sustainable, is the question, you know? And looking at this site, that's serviced by water, that's serviced by sewer, that does have, you know, a minimal number of, of neighbors, it's on, on the border of Mansfield, it's just, you know, it's, it's looking at, at everything and all the pluses and minuses and, you know, the discussion that I want to, that I want us to have, that we didn't really get to have last time, you know, on those, those pluses and minuses.
Just one other point, that, and homeownership here is far more desirable to the town than, than perhaps more apartments. I mean, I don't mean that to say anything about, about apartments, because everybody has choices in life and they have their options, and those are one of them. But own homeownership is always the more desirable than apartments, because that means people have roots in the community now, they've taken root in the community to do that. So a homeownership proposal like this, or any other one for that matter, is one is far more desirable to the town in that, in that regard. So we have, we have a lot of apartments, right, Paige? I mean, we have, what, 800 and some odd apartments right now, and only 175 are considered really affordable. So that's a big number versus what it really is in terms of affordability. So I think that really goes to your point that you raised earlier, you know, we think there's a lot of affordable units in town, but there really aren't.
Right, that was eye-opening to me, I did not, I did not realize that about, you know, how all those units at those apartment buildings counted. That's something I learned.
So statistically, what the 10% is, it could be 25% of that.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay.
And a lot of the inventory that's out there, they're all, everything that's out there, that's on, what's in our packet, is a rental, and that's different. That, you know, where, where, what do we have for homeownership inventory coming up? So I would like, just since we are about 35 minutes over the agenda, I see Heather's hand is up, I want to see what, you know, Ed and Seth, if you guys have comments, and then, I don't know, if anyone else wanted to make a brief comment for anything that has not been said before.
Thomas?
Okay, you do have to come up to the podium, but I just, if you don't mind, can I just check in with, with Seth and Doc, and then we'll go to you and Heather, if, if that works?
I'm good.
Okay, you're good? Seth, anything?
Good.
You're good, okay. Ed?
I'm all set.
Okay, all right.
In terms of the discussion here tonight, and I think we're going to have to revisit this.
Yeah, and I think, we do think that, that, you know, all of us know where Moore Street is, my best friends of 30 years grew up on Moore Street in the 100, so I can tell you, so I can tell you, I know Moore Street very, very well. I've spent a lot of time out there in that area, you know, but, you know, to go see it and and walk, you know, what we refer to as the Kelly property, even though it's not the Kelly property, uh, I think it will be helpful to go to go walk it and see it.
Get together and give me two or three times for like next week if you want to go, and I'll take you on.
Okay. And I am away next week, so maybe I could do it Monday. I don't know what your schedules look like. Maybe, um, Christina, if you could create some kind of doodle and then we will have to post it, so it will be a posted, open, you know, walkthrough, just so everyone knows. So with that, as we wrap the discussion down, if I can just ask, I think I see two hands up. Anyone else? Three hands up? Okay, if I can just ask you to just, you know, come up, state your name, be be as brief as you can, and just know that, you know, there will be public hearings down the road to kind of get more into this, but we want to hear from you. Yes. I love your lipstick. I'm a lipstick girl.
My name is Terry Howe, and I live at one oh one Moore Street, and I've lived there since nineteen seventy-four. And I completely understand, you own the land and you, you know, have a right to do something with it. And this is my, just my personal opinion, not necessarily all my neighbors. It's just the size of it that just horrifies us. So many houses, each with a couple of cars. It's the traffic mostly, I think, will be disruptive to us. And, you know, my son went to school at the borough from one oh one, which is right next door to you practically, and there was no sidewalk for him. But anyway, um, and also the uh, the sewer, we couldn't tie into it. We had to pay fifty thousand dollars and, because there wasn't enough space purchased to take our waste when they did that project, um, what is it? The one at the top of our street?
Can't Forge.
Can't Forge. Yeah, those things kind of like stick in our craw. But um, yeah, it's mostly, it's just the size. It's so many houses, you know. Progress, things are going to, you know, get built and things will change, but but a little less maybe.
And I think I I agree with you. That's like, looking at it, that's two of the big things to me is the size, like fifty-two units. Is that right? The four, the four-unit apartment buildings are one, you know, it's not zoned for multifamilies. And then a sidewalk, this can't be a fishbowl. It's got a bridge. Every neighborhood we build cul-de-sac subdivision requirements, we'll need a sidewalk in and out, you know. I'm sure neighbors may go walk in there, they may go walk out whether there's a sidewalk or not, but you know, these people can't live in a fishbowl with a bridge that that has no way to pass pass through it. So Heather and then the gentleman, the the woman in the back, whoever.
Heather Harding, fourteen North High Street, not not recreation. Um, I just had a question for Paige. Um, unless I'm incorrect, from the planning board meeting the other night, it was my understanding that although you guys are all doing your homework and getting input and everything, whether or not you guys vote to support this project, it still moves ahead to the ZBA, just like any other project. It just wouldn't be under the lit program. So.
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. So this isn't, no matter how they vote, you're still going ahead to the ZBA with the project. Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and even that planning board letter, I didn't read the planning board letter, Steph, like they were like stamping it going through and it was represented the way I watched the meeting. I kind of got a lukewarm temperature and even the letter is just, it's a viable conceptual idea.
Oh, no, oh, no, that's what I said.
Okay, yeah.
It wasn't.
Right.
You know, and and Jeff was here. I didn't, I don't want to put you on the spot, Jeff. I didn't, I I didn't want to make it sound, I don't want to speak for the planning board, but watching the meeting, they were kind of like, oh, okay.
Yeah, and I feel like the letter matches. I was, I thought you were saying it.
Oh, no, 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 no. I, no, I didn't feel like they were stamping anything through. No.
Yeah. If you can just come up also, I think you know the drill now. Your name and address, if you don't mind.
Yeah, my name's Kathy Vandenboom. I'm at one oh nine, so I'm the closest to butter.
Okay.
You went to Foxborough High School?
I did go to Foxborough High School, but I saw you at the gas station one day.
That's right.
So um, I I know something's going to go in there, and I'm I'm fine with that. It just, um, and I know we're not talking about the size, but like Terry said, it's the size that's scaring us. And so this is, what we're doing here is a little bit confusing to me because it's like we're conceptually all saying, yeah, affordable housing is a great thing to have in town. So we all agree with that. But by you approving it tonight, you're also approving where. And that's where it's a little bit confusing. If you don't have a scope, what are you approving? So what are you being asked to approve? Like Ms. McGowan said, it's a little bit, I don't quite know what we're doing here. We're all in agreement with a four oh three, with that concept as being positive. So I would just say, one of the things you said in the beginning is that we were going to look at contingencies. You were supposed to come up with contingencies, but we didn't really do that tonight. So sidewalks would be one I would, you know. Um, that road is so narrow, you can't even, I mean, I used to jog. I used to, they can all, they all used to all see me. I used to jog all the time. I jog in Mansfield on the bike path because I'm afraid to jog on my street because it is so narrow. So, you know, this may not be the best place. And if we don't need this right now, like you said, we determine if there is a need. If there's no need for it, I don't know why we're pushing so hard for this location. And as far as beautifying the space, that triangle out front is conservation land. We could beautify that anytime we wanted to as a town. We could just cut that all down and make it, I think Arthur used to take care of it. But the conservation, I believe that whole triangle is conservation land. So we're, you know, as a town, we could take care of that. We could make it where people are fishing again and feeding the ducks again. We just chose not to. And then a couple of things that the planner said that it would reduce the dirt bikes. I just have to say, my husband and I, we love the dirt bikes. We don't have dirt bikes. Our kids don't have dirt bikes. But he walks that path with our dog every single night. And the only reason those woods are kept so nice and that path is so clear is the dirt bikes. They come through and when the trees are down, they move them out of the way. So I know there's a push to get rid of the dirt bikes, but we are a butters, and we love the dirt bikes. We don't mind the noise because what they do for us is.
It's an interesting perspective.
It's, yeah. It's, we, you know, again, we don't even own them. We have four kids. We don't have any dirt bikes, but we appreciate the dirt bikers. And we see them out there all the time, and they're always respectful. They always stop for our dog. It's, you know, yeah. It's, so I'm not looking to get rid of the dirt bikers. I hope that if this gets built, I hope the new people don't get rid of the dirt bikers, because then we will have no paths. Um, and then as far as the local preference, I just want to make a point that they put in a.
Excuse me, ma'am, we can't hear her.
Oh, sorry. They put in a parking lot for Foxborough residents only. I don't know if you know, like for.
I know exactly what it is.
And it was going to be a lottery.
Yeah.
Because it was going to be at such high demand. There's only ever three cars there.
Well, now there is.
Right.
Only because of COVID. But before.
It's distance from the train station. It's it's a tough.
That was full.
It is a tough, but I'm just saying, it took, it took some time for that to pick up. And I'm a little bit worried when we talk about there's going to be a local preference that we're going to put this out there. And I think what some of our seniors are looking for is not to move into this close area. I think they're looking for lower taxes, and that's not something we can solve tonight. But I think they want to stay in their homes with lower taxes. I'm not sure that our seniors are going to just jump on this plan to move in. You know, maybe we could do a survey, um, to see if they, what seniors would actually buy before we look at the scope of this. Who would actually move? And my last point, because I know you want to get out of here, but um, this is almost Mansfield, and I feel like people who live in Foxborough, I I love this area because I grew up in this area, but it doesn't feel all the time like Foxborough. People don't even know what, they think it's Mansfield. So when you build this, it's really going to look like Mansfield. And I I just feel like it's a, it's a way for Foxborough to increase their quota here. But really, it's going to be Mans, it's, everyone's just going to assume now, because it looks like Mansfield, it feels like Mansfield, it's even more like Mansfield. From that, you know, so my house will be like the last Foxborough house, and it will just be assumption that's all Mansfield. Because that's what Mansfield does. Mansfield has a lot of bigger housing units and and the the train is in Mansfield, so the people who are, you know, living there, I feel like it's just going to feel like Mansfield. So while it's a good solution for the town, maybe to like get this in there and no one's really affected, we're affected, you know, by the traffic. And I, well, the last one, I keep saying my last one, but the last one is, the driveway is really narrow. I know you touched upon that. We're talking about contingencies. I think that driveway and that bridge would be a problem for all that traffic coming in and out. Yeah, I think it's fifteen feet, right? And our normal subdivision width is eighteen. So it's definitely, it's definitely narrow. So. Yeah. Those were some really great points and things we hadn't, I hadn't thought of. So so thank you for those.
Yeah, so I just, I would ask you not to approve, being that it is just very conceptual, and we're all in favor of this type of housing. But I don't think we took a a good enough look at where you're talking about and what the impact of that area is going to be and what it's even going to do to Foxborough, because it's going to take a section of Foxborough and make it feel like Mansfield. We're just shrinking our town, in my opinion. So that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So I want to balance, you know, doing our due diligence and and not dragging this on forever, you know, either. Um, so, you know, my thoughts going forward, and I want to know what the board thinks, is I think the site plan, the site review is good to do, just to see it. Maybe even ask Jane to come out. I'd like to see where that conservation land is, you know, that that um, that she's referencing and, you know, I'd just like to kind of see that whole picture, too, if if she's available to come out or if that's the norm or even needed. And maybe we send conditions, because remember, we're subject to open meeting law, so we can't, we can't all talk outside of this about conditions. We have to send them to one person who has to kind of compile them and put them together. So maybe that's our homework from here is is we look at conditions that we think we would need to put on or or open questions that we have by a certain date. Um, and then I think it could be worth digging into, you know, obviously, we don't know where these are going to sell, how many are going to be affordable, but I think it might be helpful to understand what like the estimated in taxes are that this would bring in. I think, like, I think I'm a numbers person, to see the number might might be helpful.
Did you have a figure?
Yeah, basically around three hundred to three hundred fifty thousand a year for the whole, for all the houses together.
Three fifty a year for the, if it's based on this many, many units together. Okay.
Right. Plus, things that you don't see, like.
It's five hundred thousand dollars to hook up to the sewer and the water.
Right.
The sewer department would love to do that. They're trying to pay off certain things. And there's a lot of fees involved for the benefit of the town.
And there's no plowing, from what I understand. Like, for example, like that stuff, you know, because this would be a private road, so DPW wouldn't be, wouldn't be plowing that. So that is my thoughts on next steps, but I want to see if others have other thoughts on next steps, other suggestions, things they would like to see, so that we can, you know, continue the discussion and then, you know, hopefully get a feel if this, if we feel it's right, if we feel it's wrong, if we feel we need more time.
Well, I think visiting the site and coming up with a few conditions.
Okay.
Should be next on our.
Send me a couple of dates.
Okay. And we'll just have to, just bear with us, because we have to facilitate that, again, open meeting law. Um, we we can't just have a group text and come up with something. It's a little bit more complicated than that. So we'll have to work with Christina and come up with something.
We'll work on it this week.
Okay.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out late. At least it's nice weather. All right, so it's, it's, we're, we're quite behind schedule, but we have some quick items at the end. If I can just ask you guys, do you mind just going out to the, out to the hall, if you don't mind, just so we can keep trucking away through our agenda items? All right, great. So the next item, I actually added this item, and I just wanted to get the board's temperature on this. Again, you guys have heard us talk a lot about, you know, what we can do to help businesses in town. And I think Patriot Place has a pretty good handle on this, but I see other towns doing things, and even the Chamber of Commerce, you know, head to toes opened an office in Norwood, and they had a ribbon cutting. And it doesn't take a lot of money, but it, you know, it's a great photo op. It lets the community know a business is opened. It helps them feel welcome to the, into the community. Um, you know, we we thought maybe starting with Central Street, because there's a really good uptown story to tell on Central Street. If you think about it, we've got Foxborough Nutrition coming. We've got GA Barber that just opened. We've got Jay Barrows that moved to a different building. We've got Eric Allen Salon that moved to a different building. Sam moved moved a while ago. He didn't have a grand opening. But, you know, for the middle of a pandemic, we've, we've got a lot going on on Central Street. Yes, Reflections Dance Studio is opening, and from what I understand, I think she grew up in town. She's opening in the Duffy Building. So we've got a great story to tell. So I think we need to tell this story and help, um, area businesses, even like the Shaking Crab, for example. That's another one that's going to be opening in Forbes Crossing. And I think we need to celebrate that. And I, you know, maybe down the road, as the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative gets a little bit more on their feet and businesses join the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce, this will happen more naturally. But as of right now, I'm looking for, you know, maybe, maybe it's a hundred dollars out of the economic development funds, which remember, those are the funds that come from the liquor licenses that that we have control of as the Board of Selectmen to help with economic development. So my thought is, you know, maybe it's a motion for a hundred dollars just to get some supplies. And we'll have to work on a process in Town Hall, you know, that if, as a new business opens, whether it's, whether it's Barry or Paige or, you know, you guys do licensing, you know, knows this business is opening, and then we we do something to kind of celebrate it and, you know, do a photo op and send it to the reporter and, you know, kind of spotlight the business.
So my my only reaction to that would be that I think you you want to make sure you coordinate with the Tri-Town Chamber.
I did talk to Kara.
Okay, good. All right. So they would, I'm sure, welcome the opportunity to work collaboratively with the town and that, because they don't want to be the only ones doing that. So if the town wants to do that, that's a good thing. Um, and then they would certainly be there in support, in support of that effort as well, I'm sure.
Yep. I talked to Kara either late last week or early this week, kind of ran the idea by her, what do you think? And, you know, she said she should be willing to to help us with any ideas. But, you know, they do it when when businesses join the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce. But if a little company maybe doesn't have the budget or doesn't know about the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce, I think that we need to help, you know, get some of these off. And it's, it's just such, it's such a little time commitment. It's such little money, and it's such a great thing to do, um, to just let people know, you know, that, hey, Foxborough Nutrition has opened, or GA Barber is open, or, you know, Shaking Crab is open. So it it won't be specific to Uptown, but I'm seeing it, you know, maybe everywhere in town besides Patriot Place. And, you know, Patriot Place only being because through Brian Early and his office, they do that on their own, and they invite us to all those, and and it happens.
Like a welcome, welcome to Foxborough proclamation of some sort.
Yeah, yeah.
From the board would be, and a ribbon cutting, you know, a formal ribbon cutting with a photo op would be great.
Yeah, I love that idea. Just a proclamation, a ribbon cutting. It costs us almost nothing, but it's, it gets the word out there and it hopefully helps the businesses. And if they don't want to do it, they can certainly opt out of it, too.
Right.
Great idea.
Yeah. So I'd just be looking for a motion. Christina, did you have any chance to look into costs for the things that we talked about? But I would think like a hundred dollars.
We should have an up to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They range from like fifty dollars, if you want to get them customized, up to like two, like one of the, um, the printers that we use, they had like two hundred fifty, and they're twenty-five or thirty-inch scissors. You can get town of Foxborough on them, some sort of graphics, which depends on if you want to customize or not. But.
Okay.
Obviously, that's a higher end thing, but I think that I could find something within like the fifty to a hundred fifty dollar range.
Okay.
The ribbon, if we want to get a customized ribbon, it just depends on how far you want to go with the branding.
Big red ribbon.
Yeah, just big red ribbon and some, some big old gold scissors.
Why don't you, um, why don't you go for the higher amount, up to.
Yeah, up to.
And then, then you guys could look through, and if you decide to go with the cheaper one, at least you know, you you have a little leeway there.
Yeah.
I'd recommend that you go up to three hundred dollars.
Okay, that's exactly what I was thinking, up to three hundred. And then, just so you know, we don't have the date, the the details worked out, but Heather, Paige and I were thinking, separate from this, you know, maybe we have a little event uptown sometime in October to highlight Central Street, invite Reflections Dance Studio to come down. You know, maybe it's in Jay Barrows' space, which we haven't even spoken to him about it yet, just kind of conceptual ideas to kind of like, like celebrate Central Street or celebrate Uptown, or, you know, whatever. Maybe Christina can help us with the branding, whatever it may be. I think it'll be a fun event that that will be enjoyable for all and hopefully help the businesses feel.
And, you know, just to, I think it's, it's important that it's, obviously, it's not, it's not just Central Street, but it's obviously, there are new ones moving all over town.
Yeah.
So I think you want to, we want to.
Shaking Crab.
Shaking Crab.
And the other.
And there's going to be others, too. I know that are becoming soon.
Yeah. So we just have you guys to come up with a process that we keep track of, you know, what's, what's coming.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Great idea.
All right. So we'll take a motion for up to three hundred dollars, I think, to use the EDC funds.
Okay.
Motion to utilize Economic Development Committee funds of up to three hundred dollars to promote grand openings of businesses in town.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So just, I would say that I'm not necessarily in favor of that. Um, just philosophically speaking, public funds for private businesses is something I don't necessarily support.
Okay.
But it sounds like it's going to have broader support anyway. But.
Okay.
Just put that on the record.
Okay. But that, I I certainly understand that. I think on the flip side, you know, as part of the the board and welcoming businesses to town, I think it's, it's little money to hopefully, you know, highlight some of those businesses and and introduce them to the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce and and get our hooks in them for the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, because it's, it's, it's kind of hard to get people involved, and I'm hoping this will kind of catalyst that. So, all right.
And also, you know, you're absolutely entitled to your opinion.
Yeah.
But that's what the money is there for? I I don't know if you know about the monies or not. That's why, that's why I'm saying it. Still doesn't matter. You're still invited.
Well, it's liquor licenses, right?
Yeah, for economic development funds. This is specific, specific funds.
They're for that purpose, yeah. They're for that purpose.
And and honestly, I got to say, in the past, besides the fire station project, we've had trouble finding stuff to spend the money on. So it's, you know, been sitting there.
You guys, you guys.
Yeah, shop local. So we've only kind of started spending it, but I, you know, for for years.
It's not all the liquor license money. It's, there's, they have a.
Just this one fee.
It's not all the liquor license money. There's, they have a fund for economic development.
So it's taken from, taken from one business giving to another.
Yes, yes. Not taxpayer money necessarily, but a business five thousand dollars once they get a new liquor license.
But I get, I get what you're saying. I didn't know if you knew about the fund. I didn't know about it until.
It's good context.
Yeah, I didn't know because it hadn't come up in my first, I think, three years.
It's not tax money per se. It's a fee.
Yeah.
That gets, that gets generated.
All right. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Thanks. All right. So Town Managers Update Bill, and then we'll go into Selectmen's Update and motions.
All right, I'll try and be quick. The, just the most, it's been a long night. I appreciate that. So we, we are in the middle of COVID as we all know and, and the, and the, and the Delta variant is, is raising havoc again with everyone, including Foxborough. I mean, our numbers are up. And as, as of today, we're currently dealing with thirty-six cases. Probable and confirmed case count in the past fourteen days is perhaps forty-one cases. The fourteen-day average is about seven point five cases per a hundred thousand and a percent positivity is one point seven four percent. So still relatively low. We're in the yellow phase at this point. So we're, we're not, we're concerned only because it's continuing to climb. The numbers are going throughout the region. But to, you know, in, in contrast to that, though, we do have sixty-five percent of our total population is, is already vaccinated. A total of seventy-one point six percent have had at least one, one vaccine and sixty-five percent have been totally vaccinated. Just so everybody's aware, go ahead.
Bill, do we have any information about how these cases are spreading in town? Do we know anything about that?
We, we don't. I can tell you that, I can give you, there's a breakdown which I'll send to everybody. You can actually, I'll put it up on the website so you can see this report. I'll send it to everybody. I just got this today, so it was just literally sent to me this afternoon by, by Director of Public Health.
Because I'm not seeing masks really anywhere.
You're not. And, you know, and, and we're seeing it in the sense that it's, it's sort of, it's pretty widespread in terms of, you know, how it's affecting people. But mostly it's, the, the people, the biggest concern we have is, is the very, very young and also the very, very old. All right. But, but the, but the most, the vaccinated folks are more, are the folks that are, I would say, the vast majority, the wide majority of people in this, in this town are, are over the age of, are between the areas of fifty and seventy-five years old. There is a really high percentage though, believe it or not, sixty-seven percent from twenty to twenty-nine that are actually vaccinated. Seventy-one percent of folks sixteen to nineteen are vaccinated. So that's a pretty good number. I mean, in, in all in all. So we, we do have a pretty good ability to get a broad spectrum of, of people vaccinated. That's not been the issue. The issue is that we're still getting cases.
It's just, yeah. So I guess it's just frustrating and nothing based on, you know, you're just getting the information you're getting. But understanding what's driving the increase in cases, whether the cases are vaccinated, folks, just to have that kind of information. I mean, that's useful information, I think.
So, so let me just read to you from the report that this is, this is actually, this may help answer your question. So the Delta variant, now what we know about the COVID nineteen, the COVID nineteen Delta variant. The Delta variant is more contagious than the original Alpha strain of the virus. Okay? Some data suggests that the Delta variant might cause more severe illness than previous strains in unvaccinated people. All right. Unvaccinated people remain at the greatest risk. Fully vaccinated people with the Delta variant breakthrough infections can spread the virus to others. However, vaccinated people appear to be infectious for a shorter period of time than the unvaccinated. Vaccines are highly effective in protecting against the Delta variant. Currently, the CDC estimates that the Delta variant is responsible for ninety-seven point seven percent of the new COVID cases within New England.
Virtually all.
Virtually all. So, and it's, it's because it is more contagious. It is more, and it, but it's really affecting the biggest, the vast majority of people that aren't vaccinated. So I think that's really the key message here.
But ironically, I, everyone I know that tests positive is vaccinated. Like there was an outbreak at my daughter's gym, for example, it was a vaccinated coach. And I will say that, you know, my daughter's twelve, so some of her friends are eleven, some are twelve, some are vaccinated, some are. Being vaccinated, she was able to test sooner, return sooner, whereas, you know, the non-vaccinated person, just because they weren't old enough or, you know, whatever their family's, you know, rationale is, you know, quarantined for a week. So, you know, anecdotally, I've heard of more vaccinated people coming up positive, but it's more of a non-issue.
Right, because it's not, it's not as severe. The impact is not nearly as severe if you, if you are vaccinated. So it's, it is, you can get, get sick. You can actually be, in some extreme cases, you can become fairly sick from it. But, but it's, it's more often the exception rather than the rule.
But I've, I brought it to Bill too. Like I'm seeing, you know, Mashpee is requiring masks again in Town Hall. Easton is requiring masks again in Town Hall. So, you know, I, earlier today I said, do we need to talk about this at our meeting? I don't want to, you know, wait. I want to be proactive. And I think for, for me, I'd like to take the direction from probably our Board of Health. So I think there'll be a lot of important meetings coming up that people can, you know, watch and find on the town meetings calendar, whether it's Board of Health or, you know, I know the schools have meetings coming up over this week and next week, just on how things are going to play. So as much as we can, you know, put the meetings out there and the links and just remind people they're on. And, you know, we all know, because we're, you know, municipal, municipal board members, you know, that it's on channel twenty-two and twelve on, you know, Comcast or how to go look for an agenda, but your, your average person may not. So as much as we can kind of help spoon feed the information, I think it's helpful. And I'm sure there'll be things in the, in the report or two about the various meetings that happen throughout the week.
So, so the mask update for, for Foxborough is that it is a, is an advisory at this point. It is not a, a requirement. That, and I think they're looking to see if more guidance comes from the state on this. The sense I'm getting though is that the state is trying not to go in that direction if they can help it. However, if the numbers continue to go in that direction, it may force them to do that. So right now, recommendation, recommendation from the CDC is that it's a, it's a, recommend that all individuals, regardless of vaccination, that's wear a mask they're recommending while indoor, in indoor public settings. The rest of the recommendation is similar to the CDC's recommendation that unvaccinated and fully vaccinated people should wear a mask in public indoor settings in areas of substantial high transmission. And currently Norfolk County is considered to be that area.
So to me, that reads, we should be having a mask mandate.
Right now, we're all ignoring the recommendation.
Right.
Hundred percent of us.
Yeah. You know, I think, I think, you know, we'll look to you guys to be proactive on that. And, you know, we not need, need not just to think about our board, but the other boards.
So, so just an, an important, important piece of information, nearly everyone in Town Hall is vaccinated. Nearly everyone. I think there's maybe one exception to that rule and that's, that's being worked on. But that's all I can say about that. I obviously.
But you can't control what comes in on the public and if they're vaccinated or not.
No, I can't. We can't do that. But the good news is that our, our folks here are pretty well protected in that respect. So that's, that's good news.
Protected, right. Masks are intended to stop the, the spread.
Right.
Vaccination for the Delta variant does not necessarily mean that they're not carrying. So it can still all be carriers sitting here right now. We may even have some strain and, and not realize it.
Not realize.
Because we're vaccinated, I think all of us. So it's a.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult scenario, obviously, at best.
So, so, so is our, our plan here that we tend to want to see what the state says? So, so I, I, we're, we're here at a meeting, so I think we can, you know, of course, I didn't reach out to anybody. But did you get, guys get multiple emails from people about masks?
No.
No.
Did you?
Oh, nobody, oh, I must be.
Oh, okay. I know what email you're talking about. The form email that we've got from two people. I actually picked up the phone and called them. Okay.
Yeah.
So we got an email that was a very direct email. I'm your boss. Do what I say. I demand masks. I'll be watching you, how you vote.
Did you guys?
I imagine we all got it. So, so I, I did some research. I plugged it into Google. You can go to a site that will say, email all your local and state legislators here. You put in your name, you put in your address, you put in your phone number, and that goes out to state, local, all of us. So I actually picked up the phone and called both people we got the email from. And in talking to them, you know, one of them was like, oh, I put my information in on a website and I didn't realize that. I, you know, to be honest, I didn't really read the note. I got to be more careful what I put my name on. So those are the emails I assume they're talking about.
Because the first one, I read it.
I called and I'm like, I think you'll get a lot further with a discussion than telling me you're my boss and what to do and, and that you'll be watching me.
I am not only your constituent, but your boss.
Yeah.
And I read it and I thought to myself, okay, when people are passionate about something.
But then when you get the second.
Then when I saw the second one, I said, oh, okay, this is some, some type of.
Yeah. So I did reach out to both of them, had conversations with them, and that is auto-generated. I can send Christina the link if she wants to see it.
Yeah, I can see it.
Yeah. So, so that is auto-generated and I explained, you know, it was actually about vaccine passports. It wasn't about masks. And I explained to them that vaccine passports will not be something that's voted on at the local level. That, that is just out of our jurisdiction. And the person then explained that it was sent to us by a form on a website and.
So going back to Stephanie's point was, you know, are we waiting for this? Well, the answer is, it, it really is going to depend upon what the Board of Health wants to say about this issue. Not, I mean, ultimately, they can, they can determine if they want to go further than what the state says or the CDC for that matter. They sometimes have done that. All right. So the question then becomes, you know, how significant is the situation here in Foxborough? And that's for them to determine that.
And, and I check the dashboard that we have access to almost every day and the numbers are just going up. I have personally not seen the number go down. Maybe I missed a day that it went down.
In town.
Yes. I, we have a dashboard that.
And is it mostly, mostly children?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Doesn't say. Because, I mean, that's what you're hearing on television that, you know, a, a lot of the unvaccinated people are children. And children not where, where the first COVID, first strain wasn't hitting children. There was very little children being hospitalized. Now it's the opposite. Children are being hospitalized and, and ventilated. Um, you know, for me, you know, when, when I'm at work now, I'm, I'm throwing the mask back on. I mean, I, I've got somebody so compromised at home, you guys, I don't have to get into it, you know, what we've been through. You know, I, I, I'm going to add a caution.
We probably should spread back out like we were before, like let Paul and Mike.
I honestly threw it on when I came in tonight.
You know, we really, we probably shouldn't. If, you know, by all means, I watched Planning Board. There was a couple of people masked, people not. You know, make your own decisions too. You know, I, I am wearing mine at the grocery store again now.
Yeah, me too.
Depends where I go and where I am. But, you know, leave it up to everyone. And then I think, you know, for me, I think we'll, I think we should just let the Board of Health know that we've raised the question and we're looking for some direction. So.
Okay. Fair enough. And then going, moving on to update on regarding options for trash recycling. I did happen to meet this past week with Kathy Merza from D E P. And I'm gathering some additional information from the Board of Health on that particular issue. So, and we're going to generate some, some options to, to bring before the board for consideration. It's, it's actually a lot more complicated issue than it appears for, for many reasons. And I'm not going to get into it right now because, you know, it's late and I don't want to get into it right now. But, but there is, there are several different aspects that we have to look at. So I will, I'll be in a better position once we have all the information pulled together for you.
And I let Bill know, he doesn't have to keep these two on every meeting. Like it just, if there's an update, it's only really when we need them. So it might come on, it might go off, but it, you know, if it does disappear, we haven't lost sight of it.
We are, we are tracking it. No question.
Same thing with the, with the next item.
And the same, on the update, this is, I actually do have an update on this in the sense that we are, there is a meeting scheduled for the twenty-third from the county. The county is going to do a, an, an update on how the, the county is going to distribute the money and the process they're going to utilize. They have teamed up with, with Bristol County, Plymouth County, and Norfolk County will be working together towards what effectively looks like to be an auditing system of, of the expenditures. They are not going to tell us how to spend our money. It's going to be our decision to do that. But they're going to determine whether or not it's going to meet federal guidelines. And so that's really a help to us in many ways. So they're planning on making a presentation in the, the Acting County Administrator, rather, the Assisting County is actually coming out to Foxborough this week to meet with myself and George and Marie to go over the presentation so that we can, and using us sort of like guinea pigs in this case.
And did everyone get the invitation for the twenty-third? It's a Zoom.
That's what I was going to ask.
I had asked it to be, yeah, you did. Everyone got, just making sure everyone's seen it. Everyone's welcome to join. So just making sure.
Yeah, I encourage, I even, last night I had a, a meeting with the, the new chair of the Advisory Committee, Paul Ivanovskis, and, and also with, with Dan Peterson, who was, we had a really good meeting, just kind of kick off the year where we are. And we're going to do a, we need, we're putting together a.
A budget debrief. I think every season is lessons, lessons learned and, you know, potholes to avoid.
Right. So we're going to work on that, the Sunday night date. And then, so, but just so you know, we're going to be having something concrete to talk to you about following this meeting on the twenty-third. So the thirty-first, I should have a more definitive position to take on this and let us know how we can proceed from here. All right. Mike is off this week, so he's due back next week. And we do have one position that we're looking to fill right now, and that is in the position of the H R Assistant, which Sarah Ackerman is leaving us to, she took a job with the, with the, with the District Attorney's Office as the H R Director. So congratulations to her. And we, we certainly appreciate everything she's done for us here in Foxborough. That's all I have.
All right, great. Selectmen's Update. I actually wrote some notes, so I didn't forget anything. So special town meeting is now going to be November fifteenth. That is a change from we originally talked about, I think, November eighth. So just so that's on everyone's radar. It's obviously a Monday. I think the warrant will open nine, one. Am I right?
Nine, one to nine fourteen.
Okay, so we'll see that on our next agenda to open the warrant. And I'd say there's about ten articles-ish now.
Right now, right now. There may be others.
Yeah. Heavy on zoning, outdoor dining, accessory dwellings, things. Nothing should be as a surprise. And then just other updates. Michael Bobbitt, the Executive Director from the Mash Cultural Council, came down and visited the Orpheum. That was a, a great, a great meeting. Paige was there. He just kind of looked at our little old theater and gave them some great tips as far as grants and, you know, other things and kind of saw the building. Paige is also working on creating a cultural district uptown. Again, that will open the doors possibly. That came out of that meeting. Or maybe she'd been working on it before, but it came up again in that meeting. So she's looking into that. And then I've already mentioned George's Barber Shop opened, Foxborough Nutrition's opening, Reflections Dance Studio has put out their schedule in, in the Duffy Building, and then Shaking Crab. I don't know that I've seen a date for that, but that.
No, I did, I did speak to the, the owner of the plaza yesterday and they're working out some final, getting ready for some final inspections.
Okay. So, so there's a lot of, a lot of things on the horizon to open, which is, which is, excites me. All right. Anything else? New or old business, guys?
Nope.
No? Okay.
I did represent the board at Walpole Outdoors.
Oh, yes.
Great opening. That was really kind of neat and.
They're fun. They're fun events. I like them.
It was, it was a lot of fun event. And then I walked in a little early and a woman behind the counter said, I'm sorry, we're not open to the public yet. And I said, oh, no, I'm Mark Elfman representing the Board of Selectmen. And she said, where'd you grow up? I said, in Foxborough. And Sharon, she said, so did I. She said, when'd you graduate? I said, seventy-five. She said, so did I. She was a classmate of mine. I probably hadn't seen since graduation. But it was a great event.
Yeah. And it helps us meet these business people that we've got to work with and they come in front of us. And I just, I help, think it helps build relationships too.
What was incredible is how many people from Foxborough worked at Walpole Outdoors.
Yeah.
Mark, our, our Historic Commission, Mark.
Forensic.
His, his wife was there and, yeah, had some great conversations with some great Foxborough people. And a lot of them had lived on Baker Street at one time or another.
Wow.
Which was very cool.
That's very interesting. All right. So we have some heavy action items tonight. We've got quite a few. And just to remind everyone, on that amended agenda with the block party, that is moved down. So we'll be, we'll be addressing that block party here. That one did come in late, but, you know, we want to make sure we, we get that one through.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
You're upset.
So motion to approve the extended hours request for Saga Hibachi Steakhouse and Sushi Bar to open at ten A M. On September twenty-sixth, October twenty-fourth, November fourteenth, and November twenty-eighth, and November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
The last one's December twenty-sixth.
What did I say?
November.
November.
Did I?
Yes.
Wow. December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All right. And under discussion, I did just want to point out, they did not apply for the opening game. I know it's a four twenty-five game, but we've seen some of the others. So just for police or whoever, you know, just it's, it's something that's different on, on that particular restaurant than the others. They, they did not apply for that one. So just to call it out. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the extended hours request for Wormtown Brewery to open at ten A M. on September twelfth and twenty-sixth, October seventeenth and twenty-fourth, November fourteenth and twenty-eighth, and December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the Sunday Entertainment License for CBS Sporting Club.
Second.
All right. And under discussion, this is just late. I'm sure they have TVs in there. Does, did this one just slip through the cracks?
It's for the Sunday Entertainment License. So if they want to have people, it's just for the state. And they just have it for the end of the year, throughout the rest of twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And same with the Scorpion Bar below it.
Okay. All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the Sunday Entertainment License for Scorpion Bar.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve a three hundred fifty-two dollar fifty-one cent in donations and bag sales to the Foxborough Cultural Council.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the application for a block party on Saturday, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, from three P M. to eight P M. on the corner of Hodges Drive and Brookside Drive.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the July sixth, twenty twenty-one Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then just before we get our motion to adjourn, just reminder on, just start thinking about your conditions. Christina will send that out in an email and, and we'll, we'll look at some dates. Daytime, early evening, like just, just, maybe if we help narrow it down a little for Christina. I would like, like an early evening, if it's possible, like, like a four forty-five, five. I don't know how that works for people. Just there's so much going on with.
For me, it would have to be. For me, it would have to be on a Tuesday or Thursday.
Okay.
It was that early.
Okay. I mean, I'm open, weekends are fine, or even later, you know, when it's light, dark out, we have light till about 7:30?
About 7:30, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, even.
Tuesday or Thursday at 5:00, or weekend, weekends, anybody have an issue with weekends?
I do, I'm away most weekends.
Yeah, me, same, same, I'd rather do a weekday.
Tuesday or Thursday at 5:00.
Tuesday, Thursday at 5:00.
I am away next week, though, so.
So let's do it next week.
Yeah, although that will take us to the 31st, so.
You didn't hear me, I said, "Let's do it next week," while Leah's not here.
That's fine, I can, I'm sure I can always go, you know.
Mike would be happy to, but we could do it the following Tuesday.
You want to go to the following Tuesday at 5:00?
Well, then we have the Board of Selectmen meeting right after, do we feel like that? Then we have executive session.
Yes.
Yeah. So what's today? Today's Tuesday, how about Thursday of this week?
You won't have enough time to post it.
All right, all right.
Friday afternoon?
When do you leave, Leah?
I mean, I'm down the Cape, I will be home Monday, and early Tuesday morning, I'll be home.
How about Monday? Darko, can you go?
I could go Monday at 6:30, I could go Monday at 12:00.
Yeah, I could go, I'd rather spend the day on the beach.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's why if we did like Monday at like 6:30, how.
I could do that.
Monday night?
You're gone, he's gone next week, too, so that might have to take us out.
We might have to split it up.
To the 31st, you know?
30th?
Oh, oh, oh.
Monday the 30th?
Monday the 30th, I'm around pretty much all day, kids aren't back to school yet, there's no camp.
Yeah, Monday the 30th.
Monday the 30th could be a good day to kind of aim towards.
I won't be here, I got a meeting, I'm down the Cape for a few days.
But it's important for us to see it, I think, so.
Yeah, I've seen it.
I'm sure Paige will come.
I've seen it.
Okay, so Monday the 30th may be a good day, just to kind of aim for, you know.
But at 6:30.
Okay.
Yeah, because I work till 6:00.
Perfect, okay.
Okay.
So if we take that right off the plate.
There you go.
Okay.
See, it just helps you out for sure.
Yeah, all right, okay.
Makes it easier.
I'll email confirmation once I receive it from Mike.
Okay.
Yeah, see if that's good for him.
Wonderful, I like getting things off the to-do list, so just a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone, thank you.